It's 6:30 and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we give another round of applause to these amazing performers? And are there parents here of these incredible singers? Come on. Can you stand up? Can you stand up so we can give you a round of applause? Thank you so much. Now would everybody please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance as these incredible singers lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you again. Can we give another round of applause to them all? Thank you. My mic's not working, I don't know. All right, may I have roll? Okay, there we go. May I have roll? I don't think.
Just speak loudly.
Testing? Okay, I think we got it. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Pantera?
Here.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Here.
Dr. Lim?
Here.
Ms. Swanee?
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Approval Agenda, Dr. Corson.
President Greenberg, items approved by consent will not come up for discussion during the meeting but will be approved when the agenda is adopted. This is possible since members of the governing board received the agenda along with backup materials at least 24 hours prior to the meeting and have had time to review and consider all items. Prior to the agenda being adopted, members of the governing board may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and brought to the floor for discussion at the appropriate place on the agenda. Any member of the audience who submitted a blue public comment card prior to the start of the meeting will be recognized to speak on that agenda item under items for approval. I'd like to offer the agenda as posted.
Thank you. Prior to the meeting, we received no blue public comment cards, so I'm not seeing anyone from the audience who wants to move anything. Does any member of the governing board wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Lim?
I would like F8.
Okay, F8, which is the MOU on Project Search, will now become G4, so moved after acceptance of gifts and donations. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to move from consent? Seeing none, Ms. Swanee may have a motion to approve the meeting agenda and recommended consent agenda items.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is governing board statements. Ms. Swanee?
Always like to have me go first. Well, first of all, how amazing were those Horizon students and I think what a beautiful way to sort of start the evening and a reminder about just the amazing institution of public education. And I will tell you, there may have been a summer or two where we just listened to that entire soundtrack, and it's very long, on repeat with my children. So I might have been kind of singing along and they did an incredible job. And so be sure to get tickets to see that show if you haven't already gotten tickets, Broadway Under the Stars. And good evening. So there's a lot that I would like to say this evening. Unfortunately, I can't say most of the things that I want to say. But what I can say is that I am very committed to following, respecting the legal process that we have in place to ensure the best possible outcome, the most just outcome. We have Dr. Dan Corson here as our acting superintendent this evening. And so for those of you who maybe don't know, Dr. Dan Corson is our acting superintendent because our current superintendent is on administrative leave. And so that's what I'm referring to, just in case anybody wasn't sure. And I do want to just acknowledge frustration within the community, disappointment within the community, just in general, that we're in this position at all. I want to acknowledge that. I think it's important to acknowledge that. And I want you to know that, and I think I can speak for all of us, we acknowledge the gravity of the situation that we're in. And so with that, I ask just for a little bit of just patience and a little bit of grace through this process. And I also want to just share and acknowledge, again, Dr. Dan Corson, who, if you don't know, many of you do know because he has been here for many, many years. He brings many years of educational leadership. He brings many, many, many years within PV and he's trusted within this community. And he's, I know, going to bring passion and thoughtfulness and, most importantly, integrity to this role. And I'm incredibly grateful. And I am also grateful to all of you. And I wish I could say more thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanee. Mrs. Christensen?
I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening today. I will say ditto to a lot of what Ms. Swanee has said. Start with Horizon. I'm proud of myself, I didn't cry this year. I have a graduate that went through this program for Horizon, under the Horizon Choir and Broadway Under the Stars. If you've never been, please get tickets. It's this month. It's phenomenal. And you forget that you're watching high school students. It's between the costume changes and the quality of the music. You will be blown away if you've never been. And I also want to thank all of the constituents that have emailed the board and contacted us. We do the best that we can to hear all voices. Sometimes it's not easy to hear those voices, but that's our job. And we are elected in this republic to be the voice of the people, so we do appreciate your voice. And I'm looking forward to some lively public comment today, perhaps. And I do want to speak from the heart and say that I'm also a bit frustrated. I've had six different seatmates and I haven't been on the board quite three years, so four of them have been superintendents. And so that says a lot. And, you know, maybe it's me, maybe I'm the common denominator, but it is frustrating. And we hear your voice and we know, and we're going to do the best, absolute best job that we can to do this in a very careful and as transparent as we can be in situations like this, but also with integrity and to do the right thing. Because everyone that's sitting up here loves PV schools and we might have different ideas on how to govern the district, but we are all in agreement that we want the best for this school. We want to set the bar high for all our students. And so we thank you for being here today and for just being part of this process.
Thank you, Mrs. Christensen. Mr. Pantera, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, President Greenberg. Again, well, good job, all of you who braved the rain to come here in person. I'm glad you're here. And again, Horizon was fantastic. I'm looking forward to going to see that Broadway Under the Stars. My granddaughter's going to go and she's going to be so jealous when she hears I saw the Hamilton thing here, because she loves that show. You know, singing it over and over again, oh my gosh. And so she's going to love it. And I encourage everyone, if you can, to go there. I was thinking on the way here that it's funny how a smell, a sight, an event can trigger memories from the past. And this rain reminded me of all those outdoor education things we used to do here in the district. I remember times going to Prescott when I was at Choya, Dreamy Draw. One time, we did a camp out there. Even near the end of my career, I volunteered to be a chaperone for Eagle Ridge, Go Ridge, because they needed a male staff chaperone to go to the Phoenix Zoo there overnight. The Phoenix Zoo, not the San Diego Zoo. Okay, get that straight. Many events, one time at Foothills, the campout was right there at Foothills. My students had designed these shelters that they had to make themselves out of cardboard boxes and things like that to see if they could be out there. Took a lot of coordination, you know, get the parents on board, get the school on board, let the district facilities know what's going on. So they were out there with their parents out on the field and I'm with a couple other staff members in the multipurpose room, you know. I'm not in a cardboard box. And, you know, students might have to use a restroom, we had to make sure everything's covered where they're going to be. So I go to sleep on the cot, wake up the next morning, everybody's in the multipurpose room. So what are y'all doing here? So, "Well, Mr. Pantera, in the middle of the night, the automatic sprinklers came off." Yeah, I said, "What? Why didn't you tell me?" I mean, I could have, no, it's okay. You were so peaceful, you worked so hard, we just let you sleep. And they did everything around me, you know. And I just love these outdoor education because you're taking the curriculum, you're taking it from the abstract setting of the school, take it to real life situations. We're still doing that. My granddaughter's going to go to an event here, Astro Camp, somewhere in California, Idaho Wild, California. If you've ever been there, they've got a great Astro Camp that she's going to real soon. And it's just wonderful that we're still doing those sort of things. Matter of fact, because I'm bragging about my granddaughter, I got this letter, she got this letter from the school, from her principal, just, you know, "Hey, I see you, I'm glad you're here, we know you moved from Idaho." The big things like the field trips, the small things like these cards that people send out, that's what helps us. The thing besides curriculum, that the field trips and overnight education thing to do it, not only reinforces state standards, but it brings communities together. Parents, teachers, students, everybody's got to communicate. Sometimes you've got to figure out how to deal with the situation you didn't anticipate would happen, like sprinklers coming on, okay, in the middle of the night. And that's the kind of communication and spirit and community cohesiveness that I know this district's going to do to help us get us through our current situation. We're going to do it together and we're going to work it out and we're going to continue to provide the best education you can find in the state of Arizona.
Thank you, Mr. Pantera. Dr. Lim?
So as I walked in, some of you didn't realize I did what the Horizon High School students just did. I had to do a costume change because I got to work at about eight this morning and when I walked out late in the evening, it was pouring rain and I got soaked like a little drowned rat on the way out. And it was just this reminder that life sometimes switches on you very quickly. You think it's a nice bright sunny day and suddenly it is pouring rain. Fortunately, there are amazing people in your lives to help pick you up, like my husband showing up with a change of clothes, with all the kids loaded in, still eating their dinner, sitting in the car to make sure that I had a change of clothes and didn't have to take the board meeting in a cold room soaking wet. This district has hand over foot, as we've gone through six superintendents in a very short period of time, has proved time and time again that our students and our teachers and our boots-on-the-ground individuals at the schools keep us moving forward, even when what's happening up here as a board, we're dealing with what feels a little like a chaotic moment. So I just want to give an amazing shout out to the staff and the teachers and the leaders that are at our schools that are keeping everything normal as we all navigate together, as my colleagues have said, what is a tough situation and information will come as we're able to share it. So I appreciate that we are currently being rained on up here as board members, but we are going to get through it thanks to the support of our amazing community and the constant feedback we are getting from both within the district but externally from outside the district as we navigate through this. So thank you for your patience as we work through this and as we navigate through this rainy situation, and I hope to see sunshine on the other side.
Thank you, Dr. Lim. I think everybody's pretty much said everything I was planning to say. I do want to thank everybody who's here and, as everybody has said, thank everybody who has reached out. This district is incredible, that's why we are all here. And I think Mrs. Christensen said it well, we all love PV and that extends to everybody in this room, that extends to everyone in our schools. And as everybody has said, when we are able, we will be providing as much information as we can. And I do want to thank Dr. Corson for stepping in. It's not an easy position to necessarily be in, but he has done so with incredible grace and incredible knowledge of what needs to be done. And that is why we are here and very prepared for tonight's meeting. And so again, thank you all for being here. And next on our agenda is awards and recognitions. Dr. Corson?
President Greenberg, at this time, I'd like to invite the governing board to join
Good evening, President Greenberg, governing board members, Dr. Corson, members of cabinet and attendees, both in person and virtual. Tonight, we have several recognitions to share with you. First tonight, 23 honorees qualified as the 2026 National Merit semifinalists. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships. High school students entered the National Merit Program by taking the PSAT during their junior year. Semifinalists are the highest-scoring entrants in each state. Finalists will be notified in February of their scholarship acceptance. We couldn't be more proud of our semifinalists and wish them the best of luck. When I call your name, please come to the front of the room and remain for a group photo. Audience members, I know it will be tough, but if we could hold off applause until all names are called. From Horizon High School, Anna Parker, Griffin Connolly, Miles Chovnik, Ariana Manfredi, Ramya Ramanathan, Taran Falvey. From Paradise Valley High School, Kesa Burns, Tejas Dulepala, Archana Gurudu, Prashansa Narar, Montak Parashar, Arush Reddy, Shom Sathinsa, Tyler Sherwin, Liam Wellen. From Pinnacle High School, Adarsh Vikram, Shivani Satish Kumar, Ishaa Rostogi, Christian Kasabov, Kylie Busby, and Grant Beck. Let's have another big round of applause for our 2026 National Merit semifinalists. Our next recognition this evening is the Paradise Valley Education Support Professional of the Month. Sean Webster, PVSEA president, is here to make the presentation.
Corson, cabinet and guests. I'm Sean Webster, PVSEA president, and tonight, the Paradise Valley Support Employees Association is excited to present the October ESP of the Month to Sarah Hackett, the communications specialist for PV schools, which, by the way, is really, really hard to surprise when marketing is the one in charge of the board meetings. So they send you relentless emails to get the name. Her coworkers say she's an individual who is dedicated, has a positive attitude, and is consistently willing to go above and beyond to make her, and that makes her an indispensable part of our team. While Sarah excels in her visible roles, what makes her so deserving is her crucial work that she does behind the scenes. She is the engine that drives many of our successes, particularly in strategy and execution. Sarah's commitment in excellence and growth is phenomenal. She consistently seeks ways to improve, not just for herself, but for our entire department. She takes it upon herself to complete intensive programs like the FEMA Public Information and Emergency Response Courses. And in real displays of dedication, she even studied one of the accreditations in public schools textbooks on her own time to sharpen her skills. You can also see her commitment to visual communications as she's diligently working through the Adobe Creative Cloud courses and tutorials, giving us incredible design support. In challenging situations, Sarah maintains a remarkable positive and upbeat attitude. Her work ethic is inspiring and her willingness to go an extra mile, whether it's facing a crisis or celebration or a major win, is unmatched. She actively fosters a collaborative team environment, often using her great sense of humor to boost morale. She is a reliable source for support and encouragement on every one of these projects. And speaking of Sarah's talents, and this is where I get a bonus point with the marketing team, we have to share a shameless plug on one of her starring roles. And if you want to see Sarah's incredible enthusiasm and communication skills in action, she's one of the hosts of our district's awesome podcasts, which recently has been transformed into a video podcast, so go check that out. It's excellent and Sarah is a huge part of that success. So please welcome, or please join me in congratulating Sarah Hackett as employee of the month.
Next is the recipient of the Paradise Valley Education Association's Recognition of Professional Standards Award for teachers. The honoree will be introduced by Heather Schmidt, PVEA president.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Dr. Corson, governing board and cabinet. My name is Heather Schmidt and I am proud to serve as the president of the Paradise Valley Education Association, which represents the certified employees of PV. Once a month, I get to recognize a certified employee and give them their props, which stands for professionals recognizing other professionals' successes. This one is a fun one for me because it is someone I have gotten to work with in most of my time here in PV. Tonight, I am honored to recognize my former colleague, Erin Hanakin, a speech-language pathologist at James P. Lee Early Childhood Learning Center in the SUN Kids Developmental Preschool Program. As the recipient of the October 2025 PVEA props, I received four nominations. I contained myself for all of last year, not recognizing any of my former colleagues at JPL, but this one I couldn't resist. I received four amazing nominations from her colleagues. Here are a few of the amazing things that I heard. When Erin walks into the classroom, her, the students are always so excited to see her. They run up and give her the biggest hugs. Her presence is not only cherished by students, but also deeply valued by our entire SUN Kids team. Erin is a dedicated, knowledgeable, and compassionate professional SLP who goes above and beyond to support students with speech and language delays. You can always see how she truly enjoys what she does. She also goes above and beyond to help the students and the team with her creative approach and the activities that she provides. Erin always has a calm, professional approach when engaging parents through the initial preschool evaluations, welcoming them and helping to guide them through their and their child's first experience in the public school setting. Erin is an amazing colleague to work alongside. Her commitment extends far beyond the classroom. She always works closely with families, generously offering her time to coach parents and ensure that they feel confident in helping their children make meaningful progress towards goals at home as well as at school. Every day, we see her patient and genuine way that she connects with the children she assesses and the empathetic way that she shares those results with parents. The SUN Kids preschool program is incredibly lucky to have Erin working here and she is more than worthy of receiving her props.
Our final recognition this evening will be presented by Shelley Strofus, president of the Paradise Valley Principals Association. Mrs. Strofus will present the Administrators Celebrated for Excellence and Support, ACE's Award. This quarterly recognition highlights administrators and their accomplishments.
Does everyone keep laughing at me? I'm on day three of crutches. So before I start, I just wanted to thank the board for choosing Dr. Corson to represent us. I'm not going to lie, last week, I like teared up a little bit because I was like, "No, he's our boss." But he has the principals group full support and thank you for choosing him to lead us through. I know this is a frustrating situation, but like you all said, we will get through it. So we're behind you and thank you for what you're doing. But good evening, President Greenberg, governing board members, Dr. Corson, cabinet and guests. My name is Shelley Strofus, I'm the president of PVP. It is my great honor to stand before you tonight, representing an incredible group of leaders, the principals and assistant principals of PV schools. We would like to recognize one of our leaders for our quarterly ACE's Award, Administrators Celebrated for Excellence and Support. While many principals and assistant principals were nominated tonight, we would like to celebrate Mr. Gary Callahan from Sweetwater Community School. Here is what his colleagues had to say. Four years ago, Sweetwater faced steep challenges, carrying the burden of a federal ATSI and CSI designations due to low graduation rates. Gary's tireless effort and profound leadership has made that a thing of the past. As of September 3, 2025, Sweetwater officially exited both federal designations and last year earned the state's highest recognition, a letter grade of A. This monumental success is the result of strategic, empathetic leadership. Gary's approach focuses on cultivating a school-wide culture based on strength, courage, and success. He mentored the administrative team, empowered staff, and crucially drastically reduced suspensions by moving away from punitive measures. He is a constant approachable presence for students, greeting them every morning. I've witnessed this. He's out there with the music going, saying hi every morning. He ensures every new student feels welcomed through personal orientation meetings, establishing a vital feels welcomed through personal orientation meetings, establishing a vital partnership with families from day one. To the students, Gary is not a disciplinarian. He is a trusted adult who is there to help them succeed. Gary's ability to foster collective leadership and champion student achievement has created an incredible legacy. The transformation of Sweetwater Community School from a challenging designation to an A school is his testament. For his unwavering dedication and the profound impact he has had on every life at Sweetwater, it's my honor to present the PvP Aces Award to Mr. Gary Callahan.
And that President Greenberg concludes this evening's awards and recognitions.
Next on the agenda, Superintendent Comments, Dr. Corson.
Thank you, President Greenberg. In PV schools, we engage, inspire, and nurture students through high-quality instruction, meaningful educational opportunities, and dynamic learning experiences. Many of these experiences can be found at our high schools, four of which were recently named among America's Best. Congratulations to Shadow Mountain, Pinnacle High School, Paradise Valley, and Horizon High Schools for being named among the best public high schools in the nation by U.S. News &amp; World Report, which ranked schools based on college preparedness, graduation rates, and student performance on standardized tests. This is truly a testament to the hard work of our student staff, teachers, and school administrators. We're incredibly proud of these rankings and believe they reflect the dedication of our student staff and community. Congratulations to our high schools. Tonight, we would also like to recognize 12 students who earned a perfect score of 36 on the ACT. Each year, approximately 2 million high school students take the ACT, and less than 1% of them achieve a perfect score of 36. This places our students among an elite group of high achievers. What an incredible accomplishment. We're immensely proud of their hard work and dedication. So please join me in congratulating these students. And if you are here tonight, please stand and be recognized. From Paradise Valley High School, Arlena Garudu, Zachary Kelso, Arush Reddy, Diego Segua, Tyler Sergwin, and Liam Whelan. From Pinnacle High School, Emily Pie, Anna Darash Vikram. From Horizon High School, Anna Parker, Orianna Manfredi, and Lena Frayman. And from Shadow Mountain High School, Jack Moyer. Congratulations to all of these students. And then lastly, tonight, it is with great pride that I share that PV schools has officially achieved system-wide accreditation through Cognia, a global leader in school improvement and accountability. This recognition affirms the commitment to excellence of our teachers, leaders, staff, students, families, and community partners. While in the past, we only recognized or accredited our high schools, now every school in our district carries this prestigious accreditation through June of 2031, joining a distinguished network of institutions across the nation and world that meet Cognia's rigorous standards. The accomplishment reflects not only the quality of instruction happening in our classrooms, but also the strength of our district systems, leadership practices, and culture of continuous improvement. I do want to extend my deepest gratitude to our staff and countless -- and who have contributed countless hours to the accreditation process, and to our governing board for your steadfast support of our vision for student success. And most importantly, this honor belongs to our students, whose learning and growth remain at the center of everything we do. Tonight, we celebrate this milestone as a validation of the hard work happening across PV schools, and as a reminder that our journey of improvement continues. Accreditation is not a finish line. It's a commitment to sustaining high standards and ensuring that every student in PV schools thrives. And that concludes, President Greenberg, my comments for this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Corson. Next on the agenda are items for approval. So first is AFR approval, the annual financial report for fiscal year 2024-2025, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Berrigan.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board, and Dr. Corson. I do have a presentation this evening on our annual financial report, and there it is. I'll just quickly remind you of the timeline. You see this shared with you a couple of times per year, and the different colors reflect the different years that we are working in at the same time, essentially. So just kind of a peek of this year. In January, up until April, May, sometimes, many times, June of the year, our state's working at the legislature to determine our budget capacity for the coming year. And by June, the district proposes a budget with an adoption no later than July 15th. By October 15th, which is what's happening this evening, we prepare and have for the governing board an annual financial report for the prior year. Then in December, we are back to the current year. We do a budget revision, the first budget revision of the year. By January through, again, June of this coming year, 2026, the state will be working again at the legislature to determine the budget capacity for the next year. So now we sort of started in that third year at a time. In February or in March, we release the annual comprehensive financial report. That's different than tonight's AFR. The AFR is used to help prepare the annual comprehensive financial report. And when it's comprehensive, it is comprehensive. It's the much thicker one that you guys receive, about 140 pages in the spring. On March 1st, the Arizona Auditor General releases their classroom spending report for the following year. And then by May 15th, we're doing the final budget revision for the current year that we're in. So just a reminder of all of the things that are happening all at the same time. So the purpose of the annual financial report, we have to get that approved by the governing board and submitted to the Arizona Department of Education by October 15th of each year. It's an opportunity for us to provide our policymakers, and in particular, our taxpayers with our detailed information on our expenses and our revenues. Our AFR is then reviewed by the state to ensure that we are within our budget limits with our spending. And then, as mentioned, we use that AFR to develop that comprehensive annual financial report. Is required to be approved by the governing board, and then with our financial transparency, we post that on ADE's website, and then we have a link on our district website that points to that ADE posting, so that anybody can view that at any time, and there are multiple years on that posting. So as we move into the detailed information, there's just a little bit of quick facts that I like to provide the board and the community with. Our average daily membership, which is essentially our enrollment, it's the number that we're funded off of with the state, was a little more than $25,000 for this year. After we provide weights or get weights for each student, that ends up being obviously much more than that, but that is our ADM, our base ADM number. And then that other main multiplier is known as the base support level. That's the amount that the legislature approves each year per pupil or per ADM, and that starts off at $5,013. And again, there is some more when there are multipliers or the weights that are added to each student. This year, our accounting folks processed over 36,000 lines of accounting data. That's pretty significant. And we processed almost 11,000 purchase orders. We've been busy. Okay, so moving on to our MNO budget balance, our budgeted expenditures, or what we could spend up to this year, was almost $266,000. Our actual expenditures were a little over $243,000, leaving us with an ending budget balance of about $22.5 million. And that is the main budget balance carry forward that we look for each year to continue with, so that we have that in case of an emergency, like if the state's expenditure limit were not to be overridden, or something of that nature were to occur. And there is a fund balance page of the AFR, and I just try to remind everybody each year, because I know you all are not in this each year, that fund balance report is about cash, and cash, and budget capacity when it comes to the MNO fund are two very different things, because cash in this state for MNO is a function of tax collection. And so we generally have more cash than we do budget balance. We cannot spend that cash. We don't have the budget balance to spend that beyond the $265 million. So for our 2425 revenues, most of those are local revenues at almost 59%, followed by state revenues at about 32%. So the equalization formula determines for each district based off of the assessed values within the district, what portion of the equalization formula the state will cover compared to what the local taxpayer will cover. In our district, the split is fairly significantly for the local because we do have a high assessed value for our property values in our district. We're almost at $5 billion now. And then we do have a federal portion at a little over 9%, and there used to be a larger county portion. That's been phased out over a number of years. And so now, these are just deferred tax collections. So you just see that barely being $11,000, which doesn't really register in the scheme of our budget. For our expenditures, our biggest expenditure fund is the Maintenance and Operation Fund, as we discussed, a little over 2.00 -- or excuse me, $243 million. Debt service, that's paying off prior bonds at $56.8 million. Our bond building expenditures, what we expended in fiscal year 2425 on bond is $53.6 million. And you do have two presentations later, one that Dr. Davis gets to do with the pretty pictures, and then I will present some more numbers on our bond in a following presentation as well. We do have federal and state grants at $34.8 million, and then classroom site fund expenditures of $24.2. When we look at our expenditures by object, and the object is the general title of salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and then we have sort of this other category. The largest amount of that is obviously always our salary and benefits. It ranges between 80 to 85%, sort of depending on the year and what expenditures we see. Over the last number of years, we've seen that purchase services dollar amount and percentage amount increase when positions were particularly difficult to find for special education teachers and special education instructional assistants. We would have to contract out to third parties because we do have requirements of IEPs that we need to meet. And so we have seen that purchase service number go up. When that purchase service number goes up, our salaries and benefits generally go down. I would prefer to see that in our salaries and benefits. I think most people would prefer to see that in our salaries and benefits, and we are working towards ensuring those positions are hired, particularly now as the economy's sort of changing back in favor of being in a bit of more of an employer market. And then we also have our supplies at 4.8% and a little bit over $1 million in other spending. With that, I am happy to answer any questions about the AFR. I know there are lots of numbers there. And if I can't answer your question tonight, we can dive into the details and get you the information you're looking for.
Thank you, Mrs. Berrigan. Does any -- oh, excuse me, Ms. Wani, before we do that. May I please have a motion to approve the annual financial report for fiscal year 2024-25 per Arizona Revised Statute 15904 as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Pantera?
Again, as always, I'm just amazed at the work you put in and how concisely you take all of that and make so we all can understand it. I appreciate your work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's definitely a team of people that support in getting all of this put together. So thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Ms. Wani?
Thank you. Yeah, so can you kind of just give a sense of, like, where does our district typically fall, or thinking about, okay, the auditor general obviously looks at this information? Where are we in terms of, I guess, revenue and expenditures as a district, if you were kind of to talk just about comparison?
Ms. Wani, in comparison to other districts?
Yeah, like, I guess I would limit it to, like, similar-sized districts.
Yeah. Okay, I'm following. So in particular, that classroom spending report that comes out on March 1st does a little bit more of that. We compare to -- we have our peer district group that we compare to, and I'll share that information. Our peer districts are Deer Valley, Dice Art Mesa, Peoria, Phoenix Union, there's a few more that I'm forgetting, Scottsdale, thank you. And we, you know, I'll share specific details at that point in time, and it really, at that point, we start to break things down a little bit different than what I've shown on here. That's where we talk about the classroom spending, the instructional support spending, the student support spending, the administrative costs, and all of those pieces. Over the past few years, our administrative costs have been lower than our peer districts, the lowest in our peer district group, actually. I expect in some year that that's going to change. It always fluctuates. We, you know, are generally always sort of chasing each other in terms of making sure our administrative costs are low and our classroom spending is high. That's something that we try to achieve. I know where we're at for this year. I don't know where the other districts are at yet, but I will definitely have that information for you in March.
So in sum, we're winning.
I love it. Yes, we're winning.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Mrs. Christensen?
Yes, thank you for providing this report. And my question is along the bond expenditures. And so just hypothetically, if the district didn't spend all of the bond money that we have, because I know in recent years, we've -- the voters have passed significant amounts, does that money go back to the taxpayers? And what happens if we don't? Because we -- I know in government, we tend to spend as much as we have, but what -- just hypothetically, what happens if we don't need certain monies and we spend less?
Mrs. Christensen, if we don't need the monies, we don't sell the bond for it. And in particular, in the 2023 bond, if you recall, there is a line for $15 million for land. I don't think that we will need that $15 million for land. First of all, I don't believe that before that bond comes, that we will even need a location for another school at that point in time. But even if we did, generally, the city has worked with the developers to ensure that the land is donated to the district. We put that in there really just sort of as a just-in-case. So we will not sell that $15 million, and therefore, because we've never sold or will never sell that $15 million, that will never be anything that the taxpayer pays.
So there's a duration usually, is it seven-year?
You can -- once the bond is approved by the taxpayers, so in 2023, we have to sell all of those bonds within 10 years, and then use them within three years after that. And if we haven't done so, then there's something called defecence. We can't be earning interest on those bonds that we have sitting in the bank. I don't envision us being in a situation where we wouldn't spend what we've sold. We will not sell what we don't need.
Okay. Have -- has there ever been a case where we didn't sell?
Maybe. Okay.
Maybe. I'm just curious, because I'm really -- I'm -- they don't make it very easy to understand school finance. I have taken classes. I've done deep dives, and it's very complicated, just school finance. But the bond really perplexes me, the bond issue and concern. So I just -- I'm just trying to get an understanding. So thank you for trying, as best you can, to answer my questions.
You're welcome.
And we will revisit this another time.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is consideration of approval of leadership secondary administrative certified employee travel requests, and I will turn it over to Dr. Corson.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board members, Cabinet and guests. Tonight, I am joined by our district lead counselor, Jackie Clayton, and our PvP President and Horizon High School Principal, Shelley Strofis, to present to you information regarding the National School Counselor Leadership Conference, for which we are recommending principals and counselors attend. And I think we're still waiting for the presentation to come up. Here we go. Jackie, you might have the remote if you could help forward that. Jackie, you might have the remote if you could help forward that. Next slide, please, Jackie. Thank you so much. So the American School Counselor Association Model and National School Counselor Leadership Conference supports our district's emphasis on academic achievement and college and career readiness through our pre-K-12 system well before even high school. From elementary school onward, we're laying the foundation. The ASCA national model strengthens this work by tying together counseling, teaching, and student outcomes in a data-driven systemic approach. In our district, we're implementing many components of the ASCA model via the new School Links platform and through the work of our district lead counselor. This work is rooted in our strategic plan and aligning it closely with goals around academic performance and graduation rates. Tonight, Ms. Clayton and Ms. Strofus will present information on the American School Counselor Association Model for which this conference supports and an overview and benefits of attending the NSCLC conference. I'll then share proposed conference details and our team will be available for questions.
Thank you. The ASCA national model is the only nationally recognized research-based framework for school counseling. It is the golden standard for an effective and comprehensive counseling program should look like, and it is used in schools across the country to provide consistent, high-quality services for students. The model is built on the 80/20 framework, which prioritizes that 80% of a counselor's time is spent in direct services with students, while 20% is dedicated to program management. It provides systemic structures that create consistency across all sites while ensuring school counselors are responsive to each school's unique needs. The ASCA model is deeply data-driven. Counselors set measurable goals, identify student needs, track progress, and continuously adjust services to improve outcomes. Importantly, it links directly to each school's success plan and aligns with the district initiatives such as improving academic achievement, reducing chronic absenteeism, and increasing post-secondary readiness. It also clearly defines the role of the school counselor, not just in supporting students day-to-day, but in connecting districts' priorities to each student's personal purpose, helping them to see how their education ties to their future goals. The model emphasizes student engagement and requires collaboration with all. For these reasons, the ASCA national model is not just a framework, it is the framework guiding school counseling nationwide. Attending the National School Counselor Leadership Conference gives our district leaders and counseling teams the chance to strengthen their knowledge of this model and bring back strategies that will have a direct, measurable impact on our schools and students. As the district lead school counselor, I saw firsthand how the National School Counseling Leadership Conference benefits our district. The sessions are specifically designed for leaders, and the opportunity to attend with our administrators allows us to plan together in real time. This conference gives us the tools to connect the ASCA national model to the bigger systems in our schools, and it helps us define what support looks like for students and staff. Attending this event last year gave us a common language and momentum that we've continued through our APC and lead counselor meetings, and it has already helped us take proactive steps to close opportunity gaps across the district. Attending this conference together, so the proposal is for all of the principals at the middle and high school levels to attend with their lead counselor and possibly another counselor on their team, allows us to plan how to move forward with this model that benefits our students, attend sessions that are specific to administrators, as well as planning sessions that I attended last year with my lead so we could hit the ground running. And we were also given tools and templates to begin implementing and planning almost immediately. Overall, by allowing all schools to attend, we can begin working together on better systems across the district to lead our school counseling departments in meaningful ways that impact our students and our families.
This slide outlines the proposed conference details, including dates, location, and approximate total cost per person. Most participants are using dual enrollment funds to cover the costs, and even our high schools are supporting middle school attendees with these dual enrollment funds. As a reminder, these funds are often used for professional development, especially as they support college readiness. CTE is funding the attendance of our lead counselor and district lead college and career coordinator. No MNO funds are being used to support this trip. This slide lists the attendees. And as you may notice, the primary attendees are principals and their lead counselors. Both individuals are essential to facilitating the implementation of the ASCA model. And at this time, we're happy to answer any questions you may have, and we are recommending approval this evening.
Thank you all. Ms. Wani, may I please have a motion to approve the secondary travel request as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member have any comments or questions? Mr. Pantera, since I'm looking your way?
Thank you, President Greenberg. As a lot of you know, my father was a counselor. Matter of fact, at the time of his death in 1986 in Scottsdale, he was head of the whole guidance department for the, you know, for the district. And one of the biggest complaints he had was about spending more time with the students. I love this 80/20% focus that you're all dedicated to. And I remember him always going to conferences all the time because this kind of stuff, you don't learn it once and it's done. Things evolve, grants, government programs, these are all changing. You got to stay abreast of what's going on, and you need to do it with your colleagues. I'm really very supportive of this program. My question is now, when all these principals are gone, we got coverage for, still with those schools, right? Because, you know, I can drop by, you know?
Yes, you can be principal for a day. Yes, we do. Our assistant principals will stay back at the sites. So yes, absolutely, that will get handled in our absence.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any? Ms. Wani?
So thank you so much for your past attendance, for sharing this with us. And I mean, it seems pretty clear, you got a lot of value out of it, the both of you attended last year. So I think that's a really smart way to go about deciding how to expand these kinds of things. So I really just appreciate that. Could you speak to even generally, like the ratio students to counselors in our schools?
Sure. In our district, the ratio for high school is 1 to 400, for middle school, it's 1 to 500, and the ASCA recommended ratio is 1 to 250.
Wow, wow. So I would imagine, and you spoke a lot about, you know, having the opportunity sort of at the conference to be doing like in real time, planning and discussion. Can you kind of just speak to how that has made a difference? And I'm assuming it's made a positive impact on navigating those really hard to even imagine numbers. I don't like, that's got to be overwhelming for counselors and students.
Sure. When I went last year, this was Jackie's, she was like, Shelley, I really think you need to go to this. And I was like, okay, what am I doing? Let's go to this conference. And I went with my lead counselor last year, and my eyes were open. I was like, oh my goodness, the conference was over the top with the amount of sessions. Like they had a great app where you could read about each session and like plan your day. And I had like five sessions I wanted to go to in every single time slot. So there was one, there was sessions that were specific for the principals or the assistant principals, and then sessions that were specific for the counselors, and then sessions that we went to together. So I was able to sit with my lead counselor and start planning things. And when we came back, we were able to lay the groundwork for how we were going to start this year. And our team at Horizon, and I know at PV as well, we're actively working to get towards that 80/20 model because we do use the counselors in many capacities to help us in other areas where we fall short, and that's really not what they should be doing. So we're working towards that goal so that our students get as much service from them as they can. And yes, it is a lot of students, so we have to do a lot of planning of how they're going to see every single one of their students for college and career, to review their transcripts. So being able to have a consistent system across the district will be fantastic because it's a huge learning opportunity. At my school, I have four and a half counselors for over 1,700 students, and four of them are in their first or second year as counselors. So this even bigger importance for us. And ASCA is a big thing that they learn about in their master's programs that I did not. So it's very useful for me to support them as well.
And I'll just say, I have a high school senior this year. And so we are actively talking about this, and she reached out to me and said, I'm going to be meeting with my counselor, so will you help me develop questions so I'm prepared? And I was like, who are you? And then I gave her like 20 questions. She probably did not go through them all, but I really, I appreciated that, you know, I mean, it's early in the year, and she's, her last name starts with a W, so I'm very impressed. And I just thank you to all the school counselors and thank you for your thoughtfulness. And it's exciting that there's this opportunity, I think, to kind of standardize and make sure all students in all high schools have the opportunity to benefit from the resources. And where is this? San Diego, not too far either. Thank you. That's all I have.
Does anybody else have? Dr. Lim?
So I wrote down early in this presentation, I think it came from Dr. Corson, that said model is for pre-K through 12th grade. So I'm just curious, it sounds like we have people attending who have attended in the past, which that is fine. I attend the same conferences sometimes almost every year religiously because there's new information every time you attend a conference. But there are some I don't attend very regularly because while the information may change, it's more beneficial for me to go to a different event or as to send someone else to said event. So I'm just wondering, as this is highlighted as pre-K through 12th grade, what are the future plans to kind of bridge this to some of our elementary leaders and some of our, I mean, we have an expansive number of elementary schools as well as our early childhood centers here in PV, so.
Dr. Lim, and then I'll have Ms. Clayton add to this certainly. So that's why part of the importance of this conference is that we include at least our middle school principals, because we recognize the trajectory of college career readiness begins well before high school. And so our middle school principals become integral into that. We're beginning to look at our K6 spaces as well because we think that that's also important. We're considering being able to bring School Links, which is our college and career-ready platform, into lower grades, beginning possibly even in sixth grade, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Clayton, into sixth grade to begin that journey. And we're also looking at career, at technical education opportunities to expand at the elementary level as well. For example, our Desert Shadows Elementary School last year, for example, partnered with CTE to bring CTE programs onto their campus to begin to showcase and allow students to be able to see the trajectory of what school looks like after high school and to begin to get them to think about college and career readiness. And we're expanding that to other elementary schools as well. Ms. Clayton, what would you add to that?
I would say in the state of Arizona, there are not many districts that have elementary school counselors at this time. That is why our national average is a 1 to 893 by the state. But we do have four elementary school counselors currently in our district. So yes, I would love to see that grow and expand as we develop the ASCA program. So it is a pre-K through 12 national model.
Thank you for the clarity.
Mrs. Christensen?
Yes, thank you for the information that you've provided. I'm hearing a lot of words like data-driven and metrics. And so my first question is, what data and metrics do we have to show and prove that this actually has helped increase academic achievement and academic outcomes in Paradise Valley schools?
There's actually quite a few. So it's based on outcome data is where we start. And so you're looking at standardized test scores. How can counselors make an impact in any achievement area possible? By creating tier-two and tier-three opportunities to close those opportunity gaps for students so they can increase their achievement. So anything standardized, it's also looking at our CCRI points that contribute to our school letter grade. Paradise Valley High School increased to a letter score of A last year, and that's been through also a lot of the work that their counseling department has done as taking on the ASCA national model in the last three, four years. So there are several pieces that counselors can definitely impact and break down that extra additional support for students that aren't meeting the level we want them to meet.
And if I could add to that, Ms. Clayton, having been as part of the advisory board at Paradise Valley High School, looking at their work that they've done through the counseling departments, one of the things that they have done incredible work with is each of the counselors have set, have set actual academic goals that they're working on with students. Each of the counselors has taken on responsibility for setting those goals, monitoring those goals around academic achievement, everything from EL, participation and improvement in EL scores to AP scores. So many of the counselors have set very high academic goals that they're responsible for teaming with their content area teachers on their campus to work through. Ms. Clayton, would that be accurate?
Yes, absolutely. Especially the ACT is a big focus that a lot of our school counseling departments are focusing on by looking at students that maybe are falling right below the state average and then creating small groups to help them gain confidence in test-taking strategies before they take the ACT in the spring.
Could you define what a school counselor is? Because it seems like it's changed since I was many, many moons ago when I was in school. So what exactly does a school counselor do at the high school level? Is it academic focused or is it behavioral focused or all of the above? Can you explain that, please?
Yes, so back in the day, we were known as guidance counselors. And there's been a big shift in over the last 10 years that we are school counselors. And we work in areas of academic, post-secondary, and social-emotional support for students. So it's mainly in the academic and post-secondary areas for sure that we focus with those students, making sure they're maintaining grades, they're coming to school, they have the extra support that they need. But it's no longer about what is it the school counselors do, it's how are our students different as a result of what our counselors are doing to impact them?
Okay. You mentioned school letter grades. Having worked at the Arizona Department of Education, I have witnessed how the sausage is made now, and I understand that a school letter grade doesn't necessarily mean high achieving scores because if there's significant improvement, like say, average of student achievement at 40%, although goes up to 60%, then that goes way up and you get bumped up in school letter grades. So I think it's kind of confusing for parents because they think this is an A-rated school, so they think that we have an achievement of 90%. And that's not the case when you, in terms of student achievement. So I'm going to go back to my original question. I still am not understanding the metrics and the data that shows that this type of training increases academic achievement. I understand supports, but what data shows that our test scores are going up?
I'll try to answer a little bit. So like Dr. Corson mentioned, our counselors have transitioned to setting academic goals for our students. So this is, we're in the early stages of modeling this ASCA framework. So in the past, it was like, oh, we're gonna, we see the kids, we help them choose their classes, we support them. Now it's very much of a system of, we're looking at data, we're going to identify, like Ms. Clayton mentioned, all of our students who are falling below the state average on the ACT, our students who are falling behind in credits. And then our counselors set goals based on those students, and then they meet with them, put small groups in place where they meet with the students, teach them study skills, organizational skills, test-taking skills. They work with their teachers to give them those extra interventions that they might need in the classroom. And so this year, we are targeting a group of our students at Horizon who are right on the cusp of being about, meeting the state average on the ACT. And then hopefully, the impact will be across the board while they're improve their common final scores, because the ACT carries a big weight on our school letter grade, as you know, but that's one test. And that doesn't, like you said, yes, does that show our students are achieving? No. But are graduation rates do? How many of our students are earning their credits? And the counselors have a plan to track that. So I think in three years from now, we'll be able to show you tons of data. But right now, we're just trying to get this off the ground of how do we track these students and show the growth that they made so that we know that these systems are working or if they're not. And we need to kind of transition to a different approach. But as of now, the counselors have each chosen an academic goal and what students, we've identified those students and what interventions they need, we're working with their families. So tons of data to come.
Okay. And how long have we been attending this conference?
I went last year. I'm going again this year with my counselors solely because my AP cannot attend this year.
AP cannot attend this year because I was going to send her since I went last year. And she's working with our counseling team as well as myself. So only, I've only been once.
So if we've been attending two years, how can we say that this is data driven and we're supporting?
This, this will be year two coming up. So last year was the first year for me and for my counselor.
In terms of PV schools, does anybody know how long we've been attending this conference? I just want to ensure that, that it is truly increasing academic achievement if we're sending 19 people out of state travel to San Diego.
Absolutely. So myself and an assistant principal went five years ago. And then no one has been back since. Last year, we sent nine people last year. And I went, Shelley went, and another, I think, there's one other counselor that's on there that would be returning. But everyone else will be brand new and it's their first time attending this conference.
Okay. So if I did the math correctly, sending 19, it's over 50,000, about $50,255 to send 19 staff members to this conference. You'll have to forgive me because I come from the business world. And typically when we, when you have lower revenues, you curb out of state travel. And I looked over the metrics over the last 20 years in our district. And it seems like district spending has increased substantially, but academic spending in the classroom has diminished to include an increase in more of these counseling type services. So as our spending has increased, I'm looking at the data and it doesn't seem like the academic achievement is increasing at the same level. Actually, we've kind of taken a dip. So spending has increased. And I'm sorry, I'm very detailed numbers based. So I'm still having a hard time understanding how this is going to support our students academically.
Ms. Christensen, what I would say is a couple of things. One is that we are funding this trip primarily through dual enrollment funds, which are intended primarily for professional development, especially in the arena of college and career readiness. So we aren't tapping in M and O funds for that. So that's one. Second, you know, I, I believe that what this conference does is it provides a framework with the ASCA model. And that framework is, how do we increase student achievement leveraging the counselor's support? And so through that, I believe our counselors and administrators receive that kind of training so that they can come back to their campuses and actually set the kinds of goals that you've heard both Jackie and Shelley speak on tonight.
Is it possible to send less and do a train the trainer model? And it seems like there's been others that have gone maybe sending one or two from each school and then training other individuals? Because to me, it, it seems excessive to send 19 individuals to, and where are you staying? At a resort in San Diego?
That's the plan. It's one or two from each school. So we're, the high schools are helping fund the middle schools so that they can come. And the conference is at the resort. So we stay where the conference is so we don't have to pay for transportation back and forth to the hotel and things like that. But I don't, I don't disagree with you, Ms. Christensen. We've never had any kind of framework. And I would say, as an administrator for 13 years, this is the first time our counselors are trying to make an impact on our academic growth. Before it's been like, they track their credits, they help them with their schedules and any other needs. And you're right, we, we have less and less people. We have, at Horizon, we have no social worker, we have no additional support. So this is the first time that our counselors are, we're actively involving them in academic achievement, in my opinion. So we need this. And as far as training the trainer, there has been, there's dictionaries of the ASCA model. You can get a master's degree in the ASCA model. So there's no way I could train my team on this, on this framework unless I went like 20 times, which I would not go this year unless my AP could go. So, and we have many new counselors in the district as well.
Okay.
I was just going to add, and Shelley can probably add on to that. I feel like this conference is very eye opening for administrators that oversee counseling departments. It's not a lot of training as an administrator about what school counselors do. And then you asked that question. But I remember Shelley coming out of the first session and said, whoa, wow, there are so many other things our school counselors can be doing to make a difference right now. And I don't know if you want to expand on that, but that is like the biggest takeaway for administrators and lead counselors to build that relationship with each other about what it is we can do to help support not only our school success plans, but our district initiatives to increase achievement for all students.
Okay. Well, just one final comment. I did look at the agenda and some of the items in there. And it, there was something called, that it said, it says promotes equity, inclusion, and culturally responsive, responsive approaches to education. And as you know, I am not a fan of that type of approach in schools because I would like to see us set the bar high for all our students and not put our students in boxes and maybe not focus so much on culturally responsive approaches. I am, you know, a minority board member in more ways than one minority voice and the only Latina on the board, I think. And so I, I just, I get really frustrated when, when we spend money on this type of thing because I, I personally don't believe that it is helping with our academic achievement. But I appreciate the detailed information. And I wanted to thank Dr. Corson for removing this item out of the consent because I think it's important for our constituents to understand where our teachers are going and especially in terms of out of state travel. Because, you know, as you know, our revenue is decreasing because revenue is the number of students. And we've lost 6,000 students in very short time, I think, six or seven years. And so that means declining revenue and increased spending. It doesn't add up, but I appreciate the information.
Does anybody else? Dr. Lim?
I just want to take a moment and make a comment. So as I've said on the, on the diocese before, I was diagnosed with dyslexia at eight years old. But once it was determined, I was a great person in class, you know, top of the class, you know, I graduated top seven percent of Shadow Mountain. But it would turn out when I got to college, I'd be diagnosed with testing anxiety. So my problems were when I took the ACT, when I took the SAT, I scored very poorly on all of these things. And it was not because I didn't have enough time, it was because I had dreadful anxiety going into testing for many years of struggling to not have enough time and things like that, things that would eventually get accommodated. But that anxiety would stay with me long after, to the degree that I, I went out to the UK where I didn't have to take the GRE to get my PhD. Because taking, the thought of taking that test again was just stifling. I couldn't even bring myself to do it. It doesn't change that I am very skilled academic and I'm very good at what I do. But when you put a test in front of me, I crumble, I, I fall apart. So listening to the talk about the support and getting those tools, I wish I had had those earlier because I still to this day, when having to take any form of a test, even a quiz online, I'm like, ah, panicked because the, the anxiety builds up in me. So the fact that I was a high achieving, high academic student didn't change the fact that I needed support on things like testing and standardized tests. And I was probably a student that was bringing down the academic score of my school because I didn't test well on standardized tests my entire life. And I might've done better if I had had proper support. So hearing that there are tools that we could bring into this district so that students like myself could be captured and have an even more positive impact on our outcomes, seems like a great opportunity to take because students like myself who are double exceptional often get missed in the process of being identified for their true issues. So I'm hoping models like this will capture those students that kind of squeak by because we're great at coping, but really could have a positive benefit on our standardized tests if they were just identified for testing anxiety or the other things that come with the, the testing process that is public education.
Ms. Wani?
And I just, I, I, I keep thinking about those, the ratios and those numbers. And I think about the value and the support that I imagine the, the, the individual counselors feel at, with an opportunity like this to actually have that time with their administration to work together, to talk through things and to feel supported so that they can go in and kind of do an insurmountable job that I would imagine that would feel like the deck is stacked against you. Like, I don't even under, I don't even understand how they can meet with so many students. I think it's incredible. And I think you said, like statewide, it's like double actually what PV's ratio is. So I think it's incredibly, that says a lot that we're focused on having individuals in our schools. And we don't want, right, just warm bodies. We want, we want professionals who feel supported, who have the tools that they need. And so I think, I guess I would be curious too, just if we, if we pass this tonight, just if we're talking about data and a data point that maybe I know, I would know would also be interesting is just, is it helping retention, right? Does this, does this help retain our counselors? Because they have a really, really tough job every single day that they get up and they go to. And do these sorts of conferences also kind of, right? There could be a lot of reasons why it could help retention. But to me, that would be an incredibly important data point I would be interested in.
Yeah, I, I wanted to, you know, jump in on, I, I've been thinking too about the ratios. And our counselors now have an incredibly difficult job to do. And we are asking them to focus on students. And now they are willing to take on an even larger piece of that academic puzzle or pie or whatever, you know, word you want to use. And it feels to me like being able to provide that via a framework that allows them to focus on the student as opposed to the process, I, I cannot imagine will not be anything but supportive and helpful in, in move, you know, increasing those, the ability to improve our academic goals, you know, student by student by student. So, you know, the fact that we are able to use our dual enrollment funds, because that's how we have to use them, to do this, the fact that we can, you know, take all of our high school principals or attendees, most of our middle schools, and hopefully, you know, as you said, get it down to an elementary level at some point, I think, is a very, will make a very positive impact on our students and on our district. Anybody else? Mrs. Christensen?
And I wanted to just comment to Dr. Lim's comment. I, I appreciate the struggles you had. I also had a lot of struggles. I struggled, anxiety, depression, even, you know, some of the suicide tendencies that our children are having now. But perhaps it's because I'm a Gen Xer. I don't, I don't know. I just, a lot of the struggles that when we, when we were kids, big family, five Hispanic kids, my, my brother was kind of disruptive in the classroom and didn't have the best grades. Back then, parents and teachers partnered this, the schools were not responsible for behaviors like they are now and the mental health of students. What turned my brother around is the school called and said, your kid is not performing, he's not behaving. So my mom went for a week and sat next to him in class. And that kind of helped curb the behaviors and his grades went up. So I just hope that at some point we get back to that, where parents and teachers, educators partner and that we don't, because as a parent, I will, you know, admit that sometimes we outsource the raising of our children to, to the schools and we get busy working. But I would like to see more partnership with parents and educators to help with these behaviors, to help with academic achievement. Because students can't succeed if you don't have both really good teachers like we do have here. And the parents that make sure they do their homework and make sure the behaviors are appropriate to the classroom.
I'm going to go ahead and guess you 100% would be on board with that. Yeah. I mean, parents participating and being accountable. I don't think, I mean, I think that we can only control what we can control. And I would imagine to anybody listening, you know, that our principals and our teachers would want nothing more than for parents to be on top of those kinds of things and do the things that they can. And the reality is, there are lots of families who, for whatever reason, are not able, can't have their own, right, challenges. But the reality is you all have to go to school every day with a large population of, of students and make sure that your job is that they are all successful, that every single one of them is successful. And I would also imagine that some of the counselors' role and some of the supports they would receive might be to even do some of that outreach and engage the families in a meaningful way, depending on what that individual student's challenges or issues are. And so I would, I would hope that maybe that might even help to the point that you were making because it's an important piece.
Dr. Lim?
All right. I do have one more question. I was just kind of reviewing our attendees. I see Sweetwater is not slated to go. Could we just get a rationale for why Sweetwater is not participating as they are one of our high schools?
Dr. Lim, I don't believe that they were available for the travel at that time, from what I recall. They were invited, however.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion passes four to one. Next, thank you both very much. Shelley, I hope you're doing okay on the crutches. Next on the agenda is gifts and donations. I'd like to review a few. At Desert Shadows Middle, Lakeland Tours, GBA World Strides provided $3,780 for substitute teacher pay for teacher chaperones. At Echo Mountain Intermediate, Dorito Partners provided $1,000 in non cash donation for rewards for students. Excuse me. James P. Lee, an anonymous donor, provided a PRC Accent 800 Assistive Device worth $7,595. At Mountain Trail Middle School, Rosa Wilks provided $5,000 for the site discretionary fund. At Roadrunner SRP, Anita V. Tarango gave $3,350 for STEAM City Builders Project. Wildfire Elementary, a Donors Choose donation came in for 1,000 in terms of items for the fifth grade superstore. And I'd also like to note that the PV Schools Education Foundation provided a number of donations. At Campabello, Desert Cove, Eagle Ridge, Echo Mountain Primary, Hidden Hills, Palomino Intermediate, and Primary, Roadrunner, Whispering Wind, Greenway Middle, and Shea Middle School, a total of $12,615 for field trips, PBIS, and STEAM programs. At North Canyon, PV High School in Shadow Mountain, a total of $28,352 for dual enrollment AP, IB, and summer school student fees. The Fine Arts Department received over $229,000 for clay for empty bowls. And instructional report, support received $2,000 for support staff, students, schools for hospitality and appreciation needs, for a total of just under $45,000 from the PV Schools Education Foundation for our schools and students. That's an amazing amount. Stacy, thank you. And thank you to your board. Thank you to all our donors. And Ms. Wani may have a motion for acceptance of gifts and donations, please.
So moved.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is item that was F8, which is now G4. This is consideration approval of resolution number 591, an MOU between Mayo Clinic and PV Unified Schools District's collaboration of a project search program, I believe Ms. Copan. Goes to you.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Government Board, Dr. Corson. This MOU between Mayo Clinic and Paradise Valley Unified School District supports our project search program for the school years of 25, 26, 26, 27, and 27, 28. For the past five years, PV Schools has partnered with Mayo Clinic to provide young adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities the opportunity to learn, train, and work in a world-class medical setting. Through project search, students spend their final year of school immersed in authentic workplace experiences, rotating through departments at Mayo, developing job skills and gaining confidence needed to transition into meaningful employment. Last year, 100% of our students who were in the program gained employment at Mayo Clinic, huge celebration for us, and demonstrated the effectiveness of this hands-on training and our and our strong partnership. This MOU will continue the program and provide ongoing opportunities for our students to gain meaningful work experience. This MOU has been reviewed by our legal counsel and we do recommend approval.
Thank you. Ms. Wani, may I please have a motion to, for consider, to approve resolution number 591, a memorandum of understanding between Mayo Clinic and Paradise Valley Unified School District's collaboration on Project Search.
So moved.
Does any member of the board have any questions or comments? Dr. Lim?
So I want to make a comment. I did not pull this because I have any major concerns with this one. I'm actually very knowledgeable on the Project Search, given the named employer is my employer. So I am very familiar with the program and the success it has had. I personally know many of the managers that are working with the students that are coming in, as well as have the privilege to be on one of our employee merge groups, which is, you know, employees that come together to support specific groups, specifically ours is around disability. But I personally know some of these students who have become employees in Mayo Clinic. So for that reason, because I am so familiar with the program and I personally know individuals that have come through this program and support this program, I feel like I need to abstain from this vote. But I wanted to be clear that it's not because I have any concerns. I think this is a great formal agreement between the two organizations and I think it's going to have continued success, as it's already had amazing success and had a positive impact on PV and Mayo Clinic.
Thank you, Dr. Lim. Anybody else have any other?
I'll be really brief. I'll just be really brief. This program is like phenomenal and so incredible. And these students are so impressive and thank you. And it's like, this is a really unique partnership and I feel so fortunate that our district gets to be the district giving this opportunity for, to students. So thank you.
Anybody, Mrs. Christensen?
I just want to concur with my colleagues and thank you for this. We needed to do more of this type of memorandum of understanding agreements in our district. I think it's phenomenal. So thank you.
Mr. Pantera?
Yes, agreed. I remember visiting the site and witnessing firsthand the program. And it's just phenomenal. It's a great thing that the participants are all super energetic and eager and willing to do their best. And it's more the better of this. I agree.
Yeah, I just want to echo, this is yet another program where our students succeed. And, and the way we define success is for each, for each one of these students, maybe a little different, but it is a phenomenal program. I'm thrilled that we are formalizing it through an MOU, but it is, anybody who can, you know, just go up and, you know, maybe take a tour and see, I would highly advise it. It's, it's an extraordinary program. And the fact that we are able to do so in PV, I think, is, is just one more, one more of those stepping stones of success that we have. Does anybody else have any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Motion passes four, zero, and one abstention. Thank you. Next on the agenda is call to the public, so I'd ask that you please turn your attention to the video monitors.
Call to the Public is about to convene. This portion of today's meeting allows the public the opportunity to address the Governing Board. Although state law does not require that the Governing Board hold a call to the public, the Paradise Valley Unified School District and its board have chosen to do so because we believe it's important to hear about concerns and issues from our community. While call to the public is not designed to be a discussion, the board is here to listen. Due to Arizona Open Meeting Law, the Governing Board cannot respond to, discuss, or take any action on items brought up during this time. However, staff members may be directed to get back to you and address individual concerns. As a reminder, the point of this and every board meeting is to accomplish the business at hand and to be able to do so in an open and collaborative way. All in attendance are expected to observe meeting rules as well as rules of politeness and decorum, so that we may serve as an example to our students that issues can be discussed in a respectful and civil manner.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three people have submitted comment cards prior to the start of the meeting, and so each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. As a reminder, we ask that you please direct your comments to the board. Please state your first and last name when you come to the podium. Our first speaker is Eddie Jackson, and our next will be Susan Winder.
Eddie Jackson, here we are again, yet another unmitigated disaster at PV Schools. One of the most essential responsibilities of the board is to hire and hold the superintendent accountable. We have numerous sources from South Bend, Indiana, that sent emails to Board President Greenberg, warning of the scandals Todd Cummings is involved in, and that he was on paid leave in February from their district, not retiring, as Ms. Greenberg erroneously stated in her March letter to the district community. We have the receipts. This comes just years after the district paid fired Superintendent Jesse Welsh over $413,000 to leave while you were also board president. A journey of excellence does not end with our students. The board is also responsible. Our kids deserve better leadership that will thoroughly vet candidates, read emails, and not just rubber stamp bad recommendations. For the sake of the kids and the entire district, Ms. Greenberg, you need to resign. Thank you.
Next is Susan Winder, followed by Barbara Jennings.
Good evening, Dr. Corson, Board and Cabinet. Everyone is aware of the error the board has made in selecting ASA as the firm to assist in hiring the new superintendent. Liberty School District also is aware of their error. I'm not going to share any more concerning this, because I have sent you an email with my thoughts. Rather, I will share some input on school board decision-making in hopes that further errors in any decisions made don't occur. Intellect is the ability to gain and apply knowledge and skills. I am sure all of the board members here are highly intelligent. It is highly apparent that two of the new board members excel in this area, given their exemplary degrees. Wisdom is the ability to make sound judgments, decisions based on knowledge, understanding, and discernment. It is not just making decisions on intellect. In fact, wisdom transcends intellect. School boards need to support parents, teachers, and students, not their own political agenda or the establishment. This is not happening with this board or most boards in Arizona. If it was, PBSD and Arizona test scores would reflect much higher achievement. Karen Taylor Robson was at my LD meeting last night, and she shared there's a new survey just released that shows Arizona is now 50 out of 50 states in achievement. School boards and government in Arizona just don't seem to care. We are letting our students down. School board members should be researching to gain the knowledge and understanding of education that will enable them to have sound judgment in making decisions. Just because you are elected and have a degree is, is not, doesn't mean that you have the knowledge and understanding for this field. You need to work to gain that. Lastly, the state's policy of assigning letter grades to schools is a scam to confuse parents. When they see their school earned an A, they think, oh, my kids are achieving. Little do they know that the test scores do not reflect that. And to your point, Dr. Lim, I have a granddaughter that's exactly like you, and she's a sophomore in a college, not in Arizona. She also had the anxiety. She applied to 12 colleges, got into 11, and did not have to submit her ACT scores. This is what I'm talking about, being familiar with. Colleges give you the choice of whether to submit your ACT scores. I love kids, I love teaching, I love working with kids, but my heart breaks when the state, including school boards, continue to ignore the lack of achievement and the ranking in the United States. Thank you.
And next is Barbara Jennings.
It's been a while since I've been here. I'm thankful my youngest son is now a sophomore at ASU. The challenge that the parents have in this school district, and I think across Arizona, is challenging, because we see that boards aren't putting the importance on students. You guys are supposed to represent us and our kids, and the only one up here that's doing it is Sandra. And it's, it's really sad. And it shows with our test scores. And when you were talking about that counseling and going to San Diego, the only one who ever expresses concern about the money that you guys spend is Sandra. You take it for granted. We work hard for our tax dollars and we expect you guys to deliver, and you're not delivering. You're failing. And I've been in this school district since Ann Greenberg has been here, and I lived through COVID, which was horrible. You put harsher restrictions than even the CDC on our school. So I, the leadership is failing, and it is really sad. And again, with that counseling, I didn't see, hear the word parents mentioned once. And that is very disturbing to me, because our child's success also comes from home. Most of it should come from home. Their values, morals, everything should come from home. You guys need to focus on giving our students education, brightening their minds, challenging them, not with their social issues or political. And that's what we see the schools going towards, and that's why everybody is moving to ESAs. And I don't blame them, because we don't want you guys trying to influence our kids politically, sexually, morally. That is not your job. Your job is to educate our children, and you guys are failing as our test scores. Like, like Susan said, we're 50th. That's embarrassing, and you should be embarrassed. And I hope you guys start listening to the parents and focusing on education, true, good foundation education, not political nonsense, not morals. That is not your job. That is our job. And you guys are overstepping your boundaries in that way. And I just want to say, thank you, Sandra. God, I wish we had so many more members like you across this state, because you know what? We wouldn't be 50th then. We probably would be actually competitive with some of the best states. But because you guys are emphasizing the wrong things, this is where we're at. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is items for discussion. First is consideration of proposed new courses and revisions for the 2026-2027 high school catalog. This is a first read, and I will turn it over to Ms. Copan.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board members, Dr. Corson and guests. Tonight is the first read of the high school course recommendations for the 26-27 school year. I want to begin by thanking our APC team, many of who you see in this picture, for their thoughtful work in developing these recommendations. Their efforts were strengthened this summer when all of our high school and middle school counselors participated in a counselor summit at Paradise Valley Community College. And together with PBCC and Wesmech, our team deepened its understanding of how to better connect students to post-secondary opportunities. This work also aligns with what our secondary administrative teams have been reading and discussing in an article called "The Big Blur." It's a national conversation about reimagining high schools to include connected pathways. This idea is for students to move seamlessly between high school, college, and career, earning credentials, exploring careers, and gaining real-world experience before they graduate. You will see this reflected in the recommendations tonight as we take steps to standardize these opportunities across the district so that all of our students can benefit. These recommendations also build on our strong partnerships with Maricopa Community Colleges, Wesmech, our university partners, CTE pathways, and our local employers, ensuring that students graduate with complete credentials, internships, and authentic job experience. You'll hear this frame carry throughout tonight's presentation, which will be led by our district lead counselor, Jackie Clayton, who will share details of the new course proposals. We also have Maureen Minnick tonight, filling in for Ally Ray, who will be presenting the fine arts recommendations, and we're very happy to have her here tonight with us. Clayton?
Thank you, Ms. Copan. Good evening, President Greenberg, Governing Board members, Dr. Corson, Cabinet and guests. I am Jackie Clayton, and this is my first year as the district lead school counselor. The purpose of this presentation is to share with the Governing Board a first reading of the process and recommendations for new and revised high school courses for 2026-2027. I'll begin tonight with the process we followed, and then I will present courses recommended for name revisions and courses with description changes. We will end with questions and discussion. Early in the school year, high school teams and departments submitted course addition and revision recommendations. This year, the school teams were looking for opportunities to assist students in achieving post-secondary credentials, increase connections to work-based learning, and open opportunities for more honors class experiences. Teams submit courses and rationale via Google Docs. These recommendations are initially reviewed by myself and Ms. Copan. The course recommendations are then brought to the APC team, a team composed of lead school counselors, curriculum assistant principals from our high schools, and other department representatives. At our September meeting, we facilitated a discussion of each of these course recommendations and add justification for the course. We ask our team to look at the course through the lens of five questions. What is the rationale for the new course? What is the pathway for the new course? We encourage our schools to look at opportunities that will allow students to complete credentials. What impact will this new course have on other courses on the campus? If the course has a fee, what is the purpose of the fee? Will this new course have impact on your staffing? After the team reviewed and came to consensus on the recommendations, high school principals were able to review and provide any additional input. Additionally, Ms. Copan brought these recommendations to Cabinet where they were reviewed and provided The first two courses for your consideration both entail providing students with opportunities to earn high school credit for work-based experience. Last year, the board approved a course for Sweetwater Community School that allowed students attending the school to earn up to two high school elective credits if they participated in this course, where they are working with the school to leverage their real-world job experience to better understand things like resume writing, getting promoted, and how to work with a boss. This course has been highly successful at Sweetwater Community School. Our traditional high schools began to explore how this course could help students who are part of a credit recovery model to get back on track for graduation. We are recommending that this course be extended to all high schools as part of a credit recovery model for students who are at risk of not graduating with their cohort. Just as in the Sweetwater model, they can only receive up to two elective credits, and this course does not receive a letter grade but will receive a CR. Continuing to have strong four-year graduation rates at all of our high schools is a priority for our students, and this course presented a solution for a group of students who might not have been able to graduate on time. We will also be working with internal work teams to create a standardized course syllabus and course framework so that all students in these courses would be getting a similar standard of support. This model is supported by ADE, which allows us to give up to two electives credits for a work experience course. The next course revision is for sports medicine internship course, which is offered at Paradise Valley and Pinnacle. This was a new course added last year, but we did not separate the course into two different numbers, and this makes it very difficult to accurately record it for CTE purposes and reporting to the state. This does not in any way change the course. It is allowing us to record a Part 1 and a Part 2. The Sports Medicine Internship 2 course will also be a repeatable credit. Students do not receive a letter grade, they receive a CR, credit, for internship courses when they have completed 60 hours per course. The next recommendation is for a course that already exists, but the ADE now recognizes the CTE course that has an embedded math credit. This would allow us to qualify this course as a fourth-year math credit for graduation. This is only allowable if the teacher- This is only allowable if the teacher is CTE certified. We are recommending that AP Computer Science A course description explicitly state that this course can satisfy a fourth-year math credit needed for graduation. We are appreciative that ADE is recognizing that grad requirements can be embedded in a hands-on course like AP Computer Science A, because students will be learning math in an area of high interest for them. As a reminder to the board, we did a similar approval for the course called Honors Engineering 102 last year. We also want to draw to your attention that we did note that ADE allowability of embedded math credit as well as dual enrollment eligible. As we go through the presentation, you will see the noted next to the courses that allow for ADE embedded credit or dual enrollment eligibility. Dual enrollment eligibility is contingent on the certification of the teachers at each of our high school sites. Course objectives also have to mirror the objectives of the college and be approved by the Community College Department Chair. This course is currently offered at PV, but will be available on any campus that has an eligible instructor and student interest. The next set of courses we are recommending name changes. Renaming Honors Principles of Sustainability to Honors Environmental Engineering more accurately conveys the course's design-based, engineering-driven focus. The new title gives students clear recognition in a growing field while aligning to the engineering CTE pathway. The name change does not change the course material or requirements. The course is currently offered as part of the CREST program at PV High School. We currently have a course called JAG, which stands for Jobs for Arizona Grad. This course is designed to improve student leadership, academic coursework, and career development, providing continuous recognition of growth. In JAG courses, there are multiple grade levels sitting in one class. In the current system, teachers would possibly have three different rosters. By calling them Fall and Spring, all students could be rostered in one class. This will be a repeatable course, and currently it is not, meaning students cannot take JAG Junior or JAG Senior twice. The JAG program would like students to remain in the program for two or more years. Nothing in the course will be changed. This is just a name change. This course is currently offered at Paradise Valley and Shadow Mountain. As part of our ongoing effort to provide clarity and consistency for students and families, we are proposing a small but important update to the names of our engineering courses. Specifically, we are adding numbering sequences, 1 through 8, to each course title. This makes course sequencing easier to understand. These courses listed are offered at Horizon, Pinnacle, and Paradise Valley. We are recommending a modest adjustment to course fees for all engineering CTE classes to ensure consistency and sustained program quality. Currently, PVUSD offers nine engineering courses across our high schools, but the fees for these courses are inconsistent, which can create confusion for families and does not reflect the unified structure of our engineering pathway. Fees in these courses have not been reviewed for over five years, while the cost of materials such as CD printing supplies, lumber, and engineering-bound notebooks has nearly doubled since the original fee was established. To address this, our CTE director has reviewed the fees across all engineering courses and the materials required to support them. We are recommending that four of the nine course fees be adjusted so that all engineering courses are aligned at $12.50 per course. Specifically, two courses would have their fee increased to $12.50, and two would have their fee reduced from $15 to $12.50. As in the past, scholarships will remain available for students with financial hardship. We are recommending course level revisions for the following courses. The marketing program is currently offered at two high schools, Pinnacle and Horizon. The marketing pathway is very unique in the fact that, starting with Level 1, 2, students are receiving dual credit beginning in their freshman year. Not many of our pathways start the sequence as the freshman and sophomore level. Additionally, ADE is allowing districts to embed the required Economics .5 graduation credit within the Marketing 1, 2, and 3, 4 level. The state is recognizing the rigor of the Marketing 1, 2, and 3, 4 courses to allow this embedded credit. Additionally, this pathway often leads students to achieving the Personal Finance Diploma Seal, which is a rigorous program included in a capstone project. This is a diploma seal that we are working to increase across the district. We are recommending that Marketing Sequence receive weighted honors credit on a transcript due to the rigor and uniqueness of this pathway. We are also recommending that we approve the ADE allowance of receiving the .5 Economics graduation credit if they complete Marketing 1, 2, and 3, 4, and the common final. The next courses are new courses that are building on current programs that have reached the point that they need new courses that offer completion of the pathway. The board has previously approved the first two courses listed in black to start the program at North Canyon. Our current 10th grade graders will need courses to complete up to senior year, so we are recommending the addition of 11th grade AJROTC, the Supervising Leader, and 12th grade AJROTC, the Managing Leader. These new course recommendations are the Advanced AJROTC courses, which expand student leadership opportunities, culminating in dual credit options with Maricopa Community College and a third and fourth-year capstone. The second recommendation is to create a healthy pipeline of students interested in military service and the SFJROTC at Shadow Mountain. We are recommending the addition of this 8th grade course that allows 8th grade students to join the high school for SFJROTC. This course would allow an opportunity for students who want to join SFJR2C to start the pathway at an earlier age. These students would be allowed to earn one high school elective credit in their 8th grade year. The course will only be offered at Shadow Mountain High School and available to Shea Middle School students only. Approval of placement in this course would be dependent on space availability at the high school. Continuing with new course recommendations, ACT Prep. This new course recommendation is for Sweetwater Community School. The course will be offered as a quarter class in the junior year, where students will receive a credit as they prepare for the spring state ACT exam. Embedding ACT Prep ensures every junior is strategically prepared for state testing and post-secondary admissions. This course equips students with confidence and strategies to improve performance, impacting scholarships, and college opportunities. Honor Psychology. This second course being recommended is Honor Psychology. Currently, our high schools offer a course titled AP Psychology, and this course often becomes a combined course of students preparing for the AP exam and students who are paying for the dual-credit course. Recently, Maricopa Community College has changed the requirements for the dual enrollment psychology standards, which now do not require the same concepts as taught in the AP course. This has presented a challenge for our high school teachers, who are required to differentiate the course to serve both sets of students. Our recommendation is to create a new Honor Psychology course to allow high schools to offer both a dual enrollment course for students who would like that pathway and an AP Psychology course for students who would like that pathway. Continuing with new courses, Public Speaking and Interpersonal Communication. These communication courses will meet the requirements for an associate's degree through Maricopa Community College. Currently, students who need these courses have to take these courses outside of their school day. With this approval, it will allow the student to complete these requirements with our own high schools and teachers that carry the qualifications for dual enrollment. We are excited that these two courses are now approved for our high school teachers to teach on our campuses. These courses are required for completion of the AA degree, and currently, our students have to travel to the community college to earn those credits. Now they can stay on campus. We recommend that Public Speaking and Interpersonal Communication courses be approved. These courses would then be available to all schools with qualified teachers. We are excited to bring these next offerings because they are aligning to growing fields of employment, and we have current teachers that can teach these courses in our high schools. AP Cybersecurity. The new AP Cybersecurity course, which will be included in the CREST program, will be a part of the College Board's AP Career Kickstart Program, introduces students to one of the fastest-growing fields. It provides rigorous instruction in threat assessment, data security, and ethical practices with the opportunity for college credit and industry credentials. AP Business Principles with Personal Finance. This AP course integrates business fundamentals with personal finance, aligning to Arizona's personal finance seal, while offering a college credit. Students gain practical skills to manage money and prepare for diverse careers in business. AP Microeconomics. We currently have AP Macroeconomics as an approved course, and by adding AP Microeconomics, it gives students a strong foundation in decision-making, markets, and resource allocation, skills relevant to both college study and everyday life. This enhances college applications while offering critical life knowledge. By adding these three college board offerings, we are expanding access to rigorous, relevant coursework that prepares students for both college success and career readiness. Each course provides students with the opportunity to earn and build skills that are immediately applicable in the workforce. AP Business and AP Micro will be available for all campuses that have a qualified teacher and student interest. To continue aligning our course offerings to growing fields of employment, we are recommending the approval of these three new CTE programs and associated courses. Hospitality Management. Currently, we have a robust culinary program within PV schools. To expand those students' skills to meet industry demands, the addition of hospitality management and tourism courses, which will give students a business management perspective of the industry. It will better prepare them to be well-rounded and prepared in all aspects of the industry. Each course within the hospitality and tourism program will require a fee of $30 per course to cover the cost of necessary equipment and consumable materials necessary to meet CTE standards. The fee is consistent with what is currently required in culinary courses. Fire Services. This program introduces students to fire operations, emergency response, and community safety, preparing them for careers as firefighters or EMTs. With hands-on training and leadership opportunities, students gain essential workforce skills. It blurs the line between public service training, career readiness, and post-secondary education. Each course carries a $15 course fee, which covers the cost of uniforms, gloves, supplies utilized during labs, and other essential equipment like turnout gear and self-contained breathing apparatuses. Precision Machining. This new program prepares students for high-demand careers like CNC programming and toolmaking. With hands-on training and precision equipment, each course carries a $30 course fee that will cover necessary materials to meet CTE industry standards. This fee is consistent with the course fees associated with metals and welding. Honeywell is providing the machinery needed for this course, and we are very thankful for this partnership. If completed, the students will be able to test for their credential and can go into employment right after high school. We have mentioned the fees associated with these courses, but we do want to emphasize to the board that fees will not be a barrier for any student. Our high schools have protocols in place for families who have financial hardships. The next set of courses is addressing a needed component that is missing in our CTE programs. The addition of these courses will allow us to add an internship experience to a student's CTE pathway in their junior and senior year. Students who are eligible will have successfully completed the required sequence of courses in their program and will now have the opportunity to apply their learning in hands-on supervised work settings connected to local industry partners. These internships not only meet the ADE internship requirement of 120 hours, but also ensure cleaner and more consistent state reporting, as each internship is tied to a specific SIP code. Students will be guided by workplace supervisors, and their progress will be periodically reviewed to ensure alignment with both academic and professional standards. By formalizing internships across programs such as force medicine, fire science, hospitality, precision machining, and others, we are blurring the lines between high school, college, and career, providing students with real-world experience, college credit opportunities, and professional certifications that prepare them for immediate employment or post-secondary education. Internships will be offered on campuses specific to the CTE pathway offered on each site. And now, Maureen Minnick will now share course updates and revisions specifically for our Fine Arts program.
Thank you. Good evening, Maureen Minnick, first-year principal at North Ranch Elementary, but the previous Fine Arts Director from 2021 to 2025, and I am here to represent Fine Arts and Ally Ray tonight. Fine Arts, first, I'm sorry, first, we'll be starting with a couple of slides regarding course fees in our Fine Arts programs. Fine Arts has not conducted a full course fee audit in over five years. During that time, some courses that do not require significant materials or travel were charged fees, while others with rising costs for supplies, equipment, and travel were not adjusted. The Director of Fine Arts has conducted a comprehensive review of the current fee structure, examined the actual costs required to sustain these programs, and benchmarked our fee schedules against those of comparable K through 12 districts to ensure both accuracy and alignment. Our first recommendation is to remove participation fees from select courses to better reflect actual program costs. A participation fee is typically assigned to activities such as AIA-recognized sports, marching band, and color guard to cover the extensive travel necessary for competitions. Previously, instrumental jazz, concert band, orchestra, and percussion ensemble were charged fees similar to marching band, but they require less travel. Therefore, we're recommending removing this mandatory participation fee and covering any necessary travel fees on an event-by-event basis, similar to how we manage field trips. Additionally, we recommend removing the course fee for PV Online Music Theory, as it is delivered virtually and does not require the same materials, supplies, or travel costs as traditional performance-based classes. This ensures that fees are directly tied to the resources that students are actually using while maintaining access to high-quality learning experiences. For the next two slides, we're going to be recommending some fee adjustments. The first four courses are specific to the IB program and are a fee correction. All studio art classes and theater classes at the 5, 6, and 7, 8 level include a fee of $20 per course. In previous course approvals, IB Studio Art and IB Theater at this level were not directly presented to the governing board. We felt it necessary for clarity to bring this to your attention and make this correction in the course catalog. And for reference, IB Theater and IB Studio Art are only offered at North Canyon High School. The next fee recommendation is for Color Guard. The Color Guard travels with the marching band and is a combined class where both courses are taught in the same classroom. Currently, marching band students pay $30 per course, and the travel requirements are the same for both sets of students. So we're recommending that both courses carry the fee of $30 per course. Piano is currently $7.50 per course, and this course requires students to use noise-canceling headphones to accurately hear their playing. Additionally, maintenance standards for our pianos is currently outsourced, and vendors have considerably raised maintenance costs. To more accurately align the course fees to these costs, we are recommending a $15 per course fee for piano courses. The final course on this chart is Dance. Currently, the fee is $13.50 per course. Due to a significant increase in the costuming materials, supplies, props, and music required to maintain high-quality performing art instruction, we're recommending that this course fee increase to $15 per course. Continuing with fee adjustments, we are recommending updates to the North Valley Arts Academy courses at Shadow Mountain High School. These courses, which are unique to the NVAA program, carry specialized material costs similar to other Fine Arts courses across the district. The recommended fees are consistent with those previously discussed for Fine Arts, ensuring alignment across programs while helping us manage the rising cost of materials. These adjustments allow us to maintain the high-quality experiences that NVAA is known for while continuing to provide scholarship support for students with financial aid, I'm sorry, financial need. Next, we're going to look at our recommended course sequencing for Fine Arts. Across our high schools, these programs offer rich opportunities for students, but over time, course titles and structures have evolved differently at each site. By standardizing naming conventions and sequences, we can make pathways clearer for students and families, improve data accuracy, and support smooth transitions between schools. Across our high schools, many Fine Arts courses offer the same content but use different names. This creates challenges when gathering data, supporting students who transfer between schools, and communicating the clear course pathway. We're beginning the standardization process with Chorus. The goal is to establish a transparent sequential structure and expand opportunities for advanced students. The recommended sequence would be Chorus 1, 2, which is an existing chorus, no change there. Chorus, sorry, Chorus 3, 4, which is a name change, currently Advanced Chorus 1 and 2. Advanced Chorus 5 and 6 is a name change, currently it's Advanced Mixed Chorus 1 and 2. And Advanced Chorus 7 and 8 is a new course to extend the advanced sequence, as well as Vocal Ensemble 7, 8, which is a name change. as well as Vocal Ensemble 7, 8, which is a name change, currently Vocal Ensemble 1 and 2. Students at the 7, 8 level can choose either Advanced Chorus or Vocal Ensemble. These updates clarify the pathway, align course titles across schools, and introduce a new advanced level for students ready to extend their experience. It's also important to note that all Fine Arts courses are eligible for dual enrollment credit pending teacher qualifications and college approval. Next, we're applying the same approach to Dance. Currently, similar dance courses exist across sites, but the sequence isn't always clear. By adding progression numbers to course titles, we can make the pathway more transparent and align offerings district-wide. The proposed sequence would be Intro to Dance 1 and 2, which is unchanged. Intermediate Dance 3 and 4, which is a name change, currently it is Intermediate Dance 1 and 2. Advanced Dance 5 and 6, which is a name change, currently it is Advanced Dance 1 and 2. And Dance Performance 7, 8, which is a name change, currently just Dance Performance. This structure gives students a clear sequential pathway from introduction through performance. We're also recommending updates to Band to bring a clear sequence to all high schools. Right now, Band courses are offered district-wide but without standardized numbering. The courses have simply been repeatable, meaning that students can take the same course four times and receive credit, not necessarily indicating a progression over the years. Adding progression numbers will help families understand pathways, support smooth transfers, and strengthen data tracking. The proposed structure would be Concert Band 1 and 2, which is the existing introductory level. We'd be adding Concert Band 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, 8 to build a full advanced sequence. For Marching Band, the current course will become Marching Band 1, with levels 2 through 4 added to reflect multiple years of participation. And for Percussion Ensemble, the existing 1 and 2 will remain, and levels 3 through 8 will be added to mirror the same progression. These updates create a cohesive structure for Band programs across the district. Next, we're expanding the same structure for Guitar and Piano. Both programs will now offer a four-level sequence, giving students a complete pathway from Beginning through Advanced Performance. Guitar, as right now, starts with Beginning Guitar 1 and 2, that is an existing course. But we have three new courses after that to complete the progression, Intermediate Guitar 3 and 4, Advanced Guitar 5 and 6, and Guitar Performance 7 and 8. And for Piano, similarly, there would be a name change for the first course, which is right now just Piano, but it would start with Piano 1, 2, move to Piano 3, 4, Piano 5, 6, and Piano 7, 8. And this also provides students with a comprehensive progression similar to Chorus, Dance, and Band. We're also recommending structured sequencing for Color Guard and Winter Guard. For Color Guard, the current course would be renamed Color Guard 1, with Color Guard 2, 3, and 4 added as new courses to support students as they grow through the program. And for Winter Guard, the existing course would become Winter Guard 1, and levels 2 through 4 would be added to reflect multiple years of participation. These updates bring both programs into alignment with the broader Fine Arts structure. We're almost there, and I bet you didn't know we had this many courses going on in Fine Arts, right? Finally, we're extending this framework to Orchestra and Instrumental Jazz. Both programs will retain 1 and 2 as they are and add the 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, 8 levels to create a complete sequence. This ensures that every Fine Arts program, Chorus, Dance, Band, Guitar, Piano, Color Guard and Winter Guard, Orchestra and Jazz, follow a clear district-wide progression that supports students from introductory to advanced levels. Our last recommendation is for new honors-level courses for the upper-level Fine Arts courses. Last year, the Board approved all NVAA courses to carry an honors-level weighted recognition. That means that because NVAA is an application-based arts program, students are receiving grades on a 5.0 scale for all levels, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, 8. These students are also pursuing the Fine Arts Diploma Seal as part of the program. As the APC team considered this recommendation, they were thinking of the students at other schools and similar programs that are also pursuing the Fine Arts Diploma Seal and taking higher levels of arts to meet the ADE requirements. This would be levels 5, 6, and 7, 8. We have also received feedback from families over the years asking for honors opportunities in higher levels of Fine Arts that would motivate students to complete four years of Fine Arts. Currently, these opportunities do not exist outside of NVAA. We have learned through feedback that students who are pursuing honors-level coursework and desiring the weighted GPA are shying away from higher-level arts because it's impacting their class percentiles and opportunities for competitive post-secondary opportunities. In comparing the rigor of the V, VI, and VII level courses at the other high schools, we find the rigor very comparable to one another. Additionally, the Fine Arts Diploma Seal would be required for the courses on the screen. The expectation would be that at the end of the V, VI level, the student would submit a capstone proposal to show dedication to earning the arts seal. And they would then take the VII, VIII level class to complete the capstone, which is one of the most important advanced requirements of the seal. If the students did not complete the Fine Arts Diploma Seal requirements, they would not receive the weighted grade. The APC team was very mindful in preserving the advantages of being at a signature program such as NVAA. Only in NVAA can students earn honors-weighted credit in lower-level 1, 2, and 3 courses because they have committed to a four-year program. Thank you very much. That concludes our APC team recommendation, but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. That was quite a bit. Does any member of the Board have any questions or comments? Ms. Wani?
I'm happy to start.
Dr. Lim.
Yeah, so I was, hold on, let me find it. All right, so I was, I had a question. So on the Marketing 1, 2 through 7, 8, it's gone from Marketing to Marketing Honors. I will get to my question in just a moment. So, for example, when I was in high school, because GPAs were so very important to get into college, all of which I got into that I applied to, both in-state and out-of-state, there are classes that me and my peers selected not to take because that 4.0 would impact our GPA and thus, at the time we were going to college, impact our chances of getting into certain universities. So it looks like these are now honors courses. Do those honor courses then carry that 5.0 weight for that marketing class? That would be my first question. Yes, yes. And so then, as we see that go to a 5.0, do we expect to see increased enrollment and demand for said course? Because there are students that now have had that open up to them that are probably thinking about a marketing career, but obviously don't want to impact their GPA by taking a 4.0 class.
Yes, certainly in my experience as an assistant principal at PV High School, the 5.0 and the game of post-secondary opportunities is alive and well in our schools, and this would certainly be attractive. Any of our V, VI, VII, and honors-weighted courses are extremely attractive for competitive opportunities for students.
Great. And so then my final question on that is, so these are only offered at Pinnacle and Horizon. Is that because we have particular programs there that are catering to this? And then if so, are there students at other schools that may be interested in these programs? And how do they get access to them without just moving to a completely different high school?
Currently, it's just at the two schools based on the teacher qualification and student interest. So yes, it is a course that is open to all schools. So if there is student interest at other campuses and they have a qualified teacher, we can provide that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Actually, I think a perfect segue because some of my questions really did have to do with the qualified teacher component. I mean, obviously, I think we all wish if we could just like weave a magic wand and grow these wonderful, you know, humans to feel like they can teach some of these very specialized, very cool courses specifically. I just want to, I have a specific question about the recommendations for the public speaking and the interpersonal communication. Both, I think, awesome, phenomenal, phenomenal. I would have loved to have had that opportunity as a high school student. Like, so for courses like that, you know, when you're making the recommendations, are there currently qualified teachers in at least one of our locations that's sort of spurring this as a recommendation?
Yes, we have a teacher at Pinnacle High School that is qualified, is teaching a COM 100 class right now. So this would be the next level, the COM 225 and the COM 200, I believe, which would also help complete the AA degree. And we don't have that offered anywhere else in the district, so students have to take that course through the community college outside of the day.
Right, so it kind of, so it would start there, and then now it's an option potentially if other qualified teachers are identified at other...
Absolutely, it would be part of the courses that teachers could pick if they were qualified.
Yeah, okay, that's wonderful. I just want to say I appreciate the fee audit. I think that makes a lot of sense, and so I appreciate the work that went into that. Kind of a sort of related question, this kind of, this goes to the Fine Arts. This sequential, like the, what did you call it, structural? Sequencing? Did I get that right? Okay, see, okay. So I, this is all kind of making a lot of sense. And Dr. Lim's question helps me kind of, I think, piece together how this could work. But one of the questions I noted while I was listening to you is, you know, and it sounds like you're getting a lot of feedback from the community and that you believe that you will have students that want to take these courses. But just, I think, generally speaking, is there a sense that, for, you know, for example, let's say like Piano 3 and 4, 5 and 6, 7 and 8, like what sort of numbers would need to be for student enrollment, right?
Yeah.
Ms. Wani, so how many students would need to request the course in order to offer the course?
Thank you, it's late, I'm tired.
Yeah, and I would say that probably varies campus to campus. Sometimes that depends on the sections that you have available for the music teacher's contract. And sometimes, so for example, we had teachers that would teach guitar and piano in their schedule because they're qualified in both areas. There were years when guitar was the most popular request, and so you would maybe have three sections of that, and piano could only warrant two. And all of our high school counselors go off of the student request to determine the scheduling. You know, there are times when you're able to offer a section for students, even if there might only be eight, even though you do want, maybe you have 25 keyboards in that room, and you know the understanding is that we want to grow the program. So it can vary depending on some of those factors.
So there's not like a hard line necessarily?
Not generally. I mean, you know, when you get down into below the 10, you know, that's a concern, right? You have to have pretty good conversations about what is the potential to grow it? What are the available options or sections that you're sacrificing to offer that? I mean, that's a tough thing that you weigh constantly because you want it, you don't want to remove an opportunity from students, but you also know that you have to use your sections wisely and go where the need is. So it can fluctuate. But certainly, most of our, just giving keyboard as an example, or piano, you know, it's not unusual to see 15 to 25 in those classes, which we know is below the, you know, cap that you would see in other courses. But because of either space in the room or the nature of the expertise, you know, it's not a course with 38 sometimes. Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not.
And so these sort of decisions are made every year, and it sounds like another added role for our counselors is looking at these really critical pieces and enrollment and interest and shuffling things. And yeah, okay, so no, I appreciate that.
Going to add real quick, a lot of our Fine Arts programs are combo courses. So marching band is going to have all levels in the same section. So it just, the teacher will have four different rosters, so they know which level that student is at. So for piano right now, they're already differentiating instruction for the kids that are repeating that course over and over.
And is there ever an oper, like, is it ever considered? So if you have a phenomenal, you know, teacher who's qualified to teach the public speaking, for example, and maybe, you know, another high school does not have but that level of, you know, qualification or someone that feels comfortable to take that on, is there ever an opportunity for that teacher to potentially teach if there is interest in another high school? Or not so much?
Like if they were traveling or if there was an extra section? I think that would have to be site-based and principal-to-principal conversation.
But it could, does that ever happen?
For Fine Arts, it does. You might have a teacher that, actually, it happens more frequently now. In the last few years, you'll have a high school teacher that might go to the middle school to offer a class or another high school. That's not unusual. Generally speaking, though, the courses may fluctuate depending on the expertise that you have available to you. But yeah, there have been opportunities that have presented themselves where you would teach your expertise on one campus and then go to another one as well.
Okay, last question, I promise. Okay, so understood. If there, could, is there like an opportunity for any kind of like mentorship? So for example, maybe a teacher is like, I have the availability in my schedule, but I don't know the first thing about teaching this class, but if I could be mentored or work with the teacher over at this other high school, is, are there opportunities like that?
Within Fine Arts, for sure, we have a really strong PLC process, obviously within our district as well, I mean, of course. And so they work together as a, as a team. There is a lot of mentorship that goes on. I want to speak specifically, though, to your question. I just kind of lost my train of thought. But for example, we maybe had a music teacher that would go from elementary to high school because you're qualified K-12 music and maybe hasn't taught a course like guitar before, but they're qualified to. We definitely always find opportunities for those colleagues to meet together, to model, to shadow, if you will. That's definitely something that is part of our process in PV schools through the PLC process, but something that's a part of the culture of PV schools as well. Thank you so much.
Does any, Mrs. Christensen?
Yeah, I'll try to get through these as quickly as possible. The high school course SWHS 5930 for work experience. Is there certain criteria? Because jobs aren't always interchangeable. For instance, if you're taking orders at McDonald's versus shadowing plumbers or electricians, those are very different. So I don't, I'm trying to understand what, what we can offer for work. Is it any work experience, credit, two elective credits?
Go ahead and take that. Yes, so they work with the employer, and there is a structured set of standards they have to meet at Sweetwater right now as part of that process because a lot of those students attending Sweetwater are working in addition to completing their courses. But we're looking at it at the traditional as being part of the credit recovery model, students that are behind in elective credits because they are also working a great deal. So we're going to set a standard I's framework to help support those students with their employers and make sure they're getting everything they need.
Okay, so, so that didn't really answer my question. Does it depend on the job, or do they just accept any? Because I'm hoping there's some standards because we're not, so that we're not just socially promoting these kids and just giving them credits if they're working a job that may not be CTE-related? I'm just trying to get an understanding.
Ms. Christensen, there is no restriction on the job. So if we had a student that was working in the fast-food industry, they could use that experience to participate in the course. So the course is more about job skills. We mentioned how to work with a supervisor effectively, how to communicate. One of the topics could be how to get promoted in that organization, resume skills, how to advocate for yourself as an employee, things like that. So that coursework has to go with the experience. So it's not simply like turn in your paycheck, we're going to mark you off. There also has to be an agreement with the employer. So currently in Sweetwater, they have to have a meeting with the manager or the supervisor to arrange this relationship. So there has to be that structure, and the employer has to be willing to partner because there is paperwork they have to fill out as well, rating the employees, giving us feedback on what they could work on so that that can be part of the course as well. So that would be the structure that would be in our traditional schools as well. The difference is we would be targeting students who are working, and some of our students are working quite a lot because they have some financial responsibilities in their family, which could make it very hard on getting their elective credits. These are elective credits only. They are not the ABOR credits. They are not the ABOR credits. So we can leverage that if that's what they, the student wants because it's simply not going to, just going to work. They have to do a lot of work other than that.
Okay, so it sounds like there's some accountability there and it's not just, you, you sign up and then you don't show up for work and you get two credits.
And we check you, right.
All right. I have a question on the honors engineering courses. Do you, and I think I heard you say it's in the Crest program. So if you're not enrolled in Crest, that is not eligible? Because I know some of them, you can be attending a different high school and attend. But I'm assuming that that's not the case for the honors engineering courses?
So we have nine honors engineering courses currently in the district. Pinnacle, Horizon and PV all offer engineering courses. Crest has some that are specific just to that engineering program that aren't offered at Pinnacle and Horizon.
Okay, so Crest has a block schedule versus, I don't know what the other traditional schedule. So if you're at PV, if you're at Pinnacle, can you take a PV course? And how does that equate if they're different types of scheduling?
Yeah, so Pinnacle and Horizon will have four years of engineering courses. So they can take one every single year. Right now, Pinnacle is just starting, so they're only at two years of engineering courses. Horizon currently has three levels of engineering, but we are looking to add more courses so they'll have four full years. The Crest program, the engineering students have six required electives because of the block. So they do more engineering classes than the other two traditional.
Okay, okay, so it's not apples to apples. Got it. This, this, here's an easy one. What is AJROTC? Because I know SF is, is Space Force JROTC. What is the A, is that just advanced? Because you said advanced, but you didn't define the acronym.
That's the Army.
So Army, okay, versus SF is Space Force, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. The, okay, here's my next one. And also IB, is that the Baccalaureate, the Inder?
IB is at North Canyon.
Yep. What does it stand for?
International Baccalaureate.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, and then last few questions, sorry. She wrote these ones down. So I think Ms. Wani alluded to this and so did Dr. Lim. If a student from one high school wants to attend another school, it sounds like depending on what it is, they can do that. Do we provide transportation or do they have to have their own transportation?
So just to be clear, for fine arts, you do not go to a different high school? Like, we can't within the school day transport students. But CTE does have that built in and maybe Ms. Clayton can speak more to that.
Yeah, the CTE, certain CTE programs are available for all the schools and there is some transportation as well as our nursing program that is open to all high schools.
Okay, and how, how do you make up the time? Because when you're in a high school, you go from class to class to class. Is there?
The students at the traditional school give up two class hours because that includes transportation time. The eighty-six minutes at PV campus is typically where those CTE courses are offered in the nursing program and then transportation back to their site.
Okay. What are we doing at the elementary and middle school levels to understand this? Because when, when my kid was in elementary school, I didn't, I thought all the high schools offered the same. And then I realized, you know, for my kid, instead of going to Pinnacle, I put him in a, in the Horizon nationally recognized program there. What are we doing to let parents know that one, one high school isn't the same as another with course offerings?
I think School Links is our new college and career platform that we implemented last year. And that is increasing engagement with our families. Parents have access to that portal. We are now launching our course planner where parents can see the courses their students are selecting. This will be the first year that eighth graders will actually be able to select their courses. Parents will be able to see that. In addition, in School Links, we are showing the CTE programs that are offered at each of the schools. And students can select the CTE program and it will pre-populate into their four-year course plan. So we've got a whole bunch of cool little things coming that parents can see in kids. And the school counselors will be going out to the middle schools to give presentations as well in January when we do our registration process.
Last question. What happens, and I think you kind of alluded to this, if there's low enrollment and the class gets canceled, what happens to the students? Say there's only five kids enrolled and do we cancel those classes? And then they have, if it's in the middle, like maybe ten days after, I mean, what happens to those students and their electives?
Course and staffing decisions are made mid-February. Once we finalize our registration numbers in January, so then sites will decide which courses they're offering. So if there is a class that only had five students that selected it, those counselors would then call those five students down and say, unfortunately, we're not offering this class next year. What other elective or what other course would you like to take? But that's done way in advance. It's not done once the school year starts.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you for the financial assistance for those that can't afford it.
Thank you. Do you have any?
Yes, I do.
I can go to Dr. Lim first and?
I finished my candy, that's right.
Okay, go for it.
It's very, really quick. I'm, I like this idea where we can finally embed that economics portion in, in the marketing, one, two, three, four, free students up to take more things, really, doesn't it?
Absolutely.
I love all the work you guys have done on this. This is fantastic. Now, in a lot of ways, the renaming will make the job of counselors easier, won't it? Now figuring out what different classes are everywhere, right?
Yeah, as well as the scheduling of students every year, yes.
Yeah, I can see that. I can see why this is going to be a big part of maybe the, the recent trip you guys are taking, that whole thing, you're going to be talking about these new courses and these changes there and learning skills from that, right?
Yep.
Yeah, pretty excited about that. I like the fact that you're keeping things current and relevant in the workforce. That's, that's, that's pretty awesome, too. That's, that's in my comments on that.
Dr. Lim?
So I'll come back to the other question I had written down. So I know we have these new CTE programs, the hospitality and tourism, the fire service, and then the precision machining. So first, my first question is, those are, those are brand-new programs. Are those building on to existing infrastructures that are happening in that school that we're now formalizing?
Hospitality and tourism will be building on the culinary program that is very robust. Fire science is going to be brand-new at North Canyon. Precision machining is currently happening at PV, like in the metals and welding area. And since we partnered with Honeywell and they brought in all of that equipment, it's a huge growing field for us right now in our state.
Great, and so I think my question there is for students going into these courses, just so I understand this correctly, for example, with fire services, like going out for EMT or becoming a firefighter is a very arduous process. Will doing things like this in the dual enrollment reduce the amount of time these students spend seeking out those, those non-traditional career paths?
Absolutely, more than likely, they'll be done with their certification and go straight into the workforce when they graduate. That's the plan. Thank you for that clarity.
Just one quick comment. Just the work-related credit. I love that there's the program that goes with it. I just want to share, the CEO of the national firm, law firm that I work for, his standard question, does it matter whether someone, in an interview, does it matter whether they're an attorney, a seasoned attorney? It doesn't matter whether they're applying to be, right, a paralegal, an office legal assistant? Did you work in high school? And it doesn't even matter what the answer is because to him, like, that tells him a lot of information. And it is a standard question. I think more and more employers are looking for that. And so I really appreciate that there is also an opportunity for discussion, for credit, because I think it's, there are the students that have to do that and that are doing that and there's lots, and it's kind of also getting lost a little bit. And there are critical skills that, that you develop when you work. It doesn't even matter what it is that you do. So I just, I really appreciate that this is a new thing that's going to be, I think, benefiting not only our students but future employers. And I think that's great.
I just have, I guess, a quick question or maybe not so quick. Particularly in the area of dual enrollment and we're talking about, you know, populating a section and potentially having to, to not, you know, offer class. Do we, some of these are available in PV online, correct? So do we push our kids to PV online in those cases? And then secondarily, sort of, you know, harking back to when we did do sort of hybrid courses, do we have that opportunity still available? Or is that in the thought process that, you know, you've got a teacher at Pinnacle offering X? Do we put kids, you know, you've got five more kids at Horizon who want to take that? Can they take it online in a hybrid setting?
We don't currently offer that hybrid setting. That's something we can definitely look at moving forward if that's an option. As far as the PV online, we do have some dual enrollment options that way. So if our current campus does not offer dual enrollment for that course, yes, counselors do allow the students to understand that there is that opportunity through PV online and they can take that in the computer lab and still get the college credit for that course.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Realizing this is first read, so this will be coming back next month? No, going once, going twice? Yeah. You always have to ask three times. Thank you very much. We absolutely appreciate it and I'm sure we'll come up with some other questions. Next on the agenda is the fun pictures, presentation of Facilities 2025 Summer Construction Projects. Mrs. Barrigan?
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board, Dr. Corson. We have the wonderful Dr. Drew Davis with us tonight. He does get to show you all the delightful pictures. I do the more boring part following his presentation. But just as an introduction to him, just want to share my appreciation for all of the work that he does. We had an incredible scope. You saw over fifty million dollars worth of projects this past year, this past summer. He manages and supports, has a team that supports for all of that. That's a great deal of work for one human being on top of all of the other work that he does. So thank you, Dr. Davis. And now show us, show us the lovely pictures, please.
Here we go. And we've got the slides up. Excellent. President Greenberg, Governing Board, Dr. Corson, Cabinet and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you our bond-funded construction projects for the 2025 fiscal year. Before I jump into the descriptions and photos of some of our work, I would like to share a little background about the projects. First of all, a majority of the projects were completed in the sixty-five days of summer vacation. Projects were considered and selected utilizing several factors, including school or program input, environmental safety, security, condition, and life expectancy of whatever material we're looking at. Over three hundred and fifty projects were completed this summer. We thought two hundred and fifty was a record that would never be exceeded. And yet, there, there we go. And every school campus benefited from a bond project this year. Thank you to the school sites and working with us. And kudos to the entire facilities team and our contracting partners that played a critical part in enhancing the quality of our learning environments. And most importantly, thank you to our PV voters, those who supported this bond initiative. Without our bond initiative, this presentation would, would be really different. And so we're so grateful to, to our voters for their support. Now, unfortunately, I will not be able to share all three hundred and fifty projects tonight. You're welcome, yes. But I will provide an overview of the most common building areas we improve throughout the district and some special projects that we completed for our schools. So this year, just to get started, we had twelve flooring projects at ten sites. Flooring upgrades included polished concrete, carpet and luxury vinyl tile and epoxy. There are distinct advantages to these types of projects. Epoxy is waterproof, easy to clean, great for restrooms and kitchens. Polish concrete is significantly easier to maintain. And carpet squares and LVT luxury vinyl tile actually enable us to remove just squares or tiles as opposed to having replace an entire floor when, when there's damage. And some new carpet at Fireside in Paradise Valley. We had sixteen interior paint projects at twelve sites. Interior paint in a school maintains cleanliness and instantly creates a fresh appearance. We had four millwork or cabinetry upgrades at four sites. Millwork cabinetry projects include full replacement of plumbing and damaged cabinetry as well as replacing outdated laminate-type countertops that damage easily. We replace that with more durable solid surface material. You can see Boulder Creek, we got a circulation desk. We also did both polished concrete and some cabinetry for our Sweetwater Art Room. The before and after on that one. This is Copper Canyon. In addition to the new cabinets and solid surface countertops, Copper Canyon elected to go in a different direction from the pink and blue Saved by the Bell color scheme with a more updated gray and white. And to the right, our teachers are enjoying the new functioning sink and counter space in the staff lounge at Desert Shadows Middle School. We had seven exterior painting and weatherization projects. Exterior ceiling, ceiling and painting or weatherization extends the life of the building envelope, inhibits insects and pests from entering and makes a building much more energy efficient. The North Canyon weatherization project was largely, was largely paid for using a school facilities division building renewal grant, just under one point seven million dollars. And a couple more examples here of some exterior painting and a little before and after the transformation of JPL at Arrowhead to Indian Bend at Mizzou. As schools age, we have plumbing issues. We had seventeen projects at fourteen sites. Water fountains, fixtures, pipes and valves deteriorate as they age. And by identifying key areas of plumbing in schools in need for repair and replacement, we avoid interruptions of water service and catastrophic flooding events. And if you ever wondered what a thirty-to-fifty-year-old drain pipe looks at the end of life, well, there you have it. Our plumbers are also archaeologists. We won't stay on that one too long. HVAC upgrades, as a major, majority of our schools have entered their third decade of life. Original build HVAC systems have surpassed life expectancy in the desert climate and harsh water conditions. Problematic and aging HVAC units impact safety, comfort and the learning environment and are more costly to use, maintain and repair. This year, we replaced one hundred and eighty failing classroom units and upgraded sixteen HVAC plants. Example of a major HVAC project, the Desert Shadows Middle School HVAC project replaced the discontinued Panasonic VRF system on the main and science buildings. These new units and duct works will provide many years of reliable cooling to Desert Shadows and they are grateful. Also tied in with HVAC are piping. Piping for our central plant serves as a circulatory system for our HVAC systems with the water towers and a chiller plant. Leaking, unstable and under-insulated piping at Pinnacle was replaced with an improved layout to improve mechanical operation and efficiency. Another SFD building renewal grant project, the Greenway Middle School HVAC project replaced pipes, pumps and two water-cooled chillers. Parking lots are replaced after attempts to seal and repair cracks are made. Expanding cracks, uneven pavement and general deterioration present hazards and safety concerns. Additionally, this work provides an opportunity to update ADA accessibility and address traffic control needs, mostly at drop-off and pickup. And North Canyon, both seal and the industrial arts space got replaced. We had thirty-two playground, playground surface, track, bleachers and sport court upgrades. Playground upgrades include place surface improvements for student safety and appropriate ADA accessibility. Replaced, replacing outdated playgrounds with both elevated and ground-level play equipment safely provides multiple engagement and play opportunities during recess. Gym bleachers can also be renewed and maintained with new motors and seating as opposed to full replacement. as opposed to full replacement. And here's the Greenway Middle School sport court. And the new Pinnacle High School track. No cracks in turn three. And coming soon, the Horizon High School sand volleyball court. Construction underway. We had two, two awnings and seven shade canopies installed. Obviously, shade and the desert sun is a good thing. We had 10 restroom projects at nine sites. Restroom remodels included updated surfaces that are easy to clean and sanitize. Updated fixtures are also less likely to fail conserving water. Before and after there, and another set of before and afters of the Copper Canyon Field restroom. We had eight LED lighting projects. LED lighting is brighter and significantly more energy efficient in comparison to fluorescent and incandescent lighting. Additionally, LED provides dimming capabilities to support the needs of a variety of learning environments. Greenway Middle School is currently in progress. It will be followed by Horizon and Shadow Mountain High School later this year. We had 16 projects of fencing at 13 sites. Upgrades included replacement of damaged existing fencing and the addition of fencing in selected areas to enhance security. Existing marquees, we had eight total projects replaced with outdated, with, with updated electronics. And the outdated electronics were replaced. And marquees don't photograph well, so you know. Electrical upgrades, providing electrical upgrades at our school sites is part of an ongoing comprehensive modernization project that includes the upgrade of internal components that deteriorate with age and use. Given the electrical current required to power a school, the Pringle switch protects the electrical switchboard and circuits from any fluctuation from the main power line to the school. It's a very important switch. And now I have the opportunity to share some special projects that we were able to complete over the summer. This special project at Palomino Primary, chronic drainage issues and a poorly utilized space were addressed to create a new outdoor learning center. Another special project, installation of 12 restrooms at Sunset Canyon for the James P. Lee Program. Installed those in existing classrooms. And yes, this is not an illusion. They really make toilets that small. One of our larger projects for this summer was the renovation of 12 Shadow Mountain restrooms, receiving a substantial upgrade. The work replaced original fixtures, lighting, tile, and plumbing. The picture to the left is pretty much representative of everything that's been there for the past 30, 40, 50 years. To the right, the upgrade. Shadows are pretty happy about it, right? And here you can see the colored tile, epoxy, and lighting create a welcoming and clean environment in student and staff restrooms, and the response has been very positive. Another project, our Greenway Kitchen and Cafeteria remodel. Project included a renovation of the kitchen and cafeteria, new lighting, a new walk-in freezer and refrigerator components, painting, plumbing upgrades, and epoxy floors in a kitchen originally built in 1992. And in the cafeteria, we were able to install new ceiling tiles, paint, lighting, and graphics to modernize the space. You can see the before and after. Another special project, North Canyon Gym Lobby. Gym lobbies are oftentimes the first impression of our school facilities the public may have. Replace flooring, bathroom renovation, paint, and lighting enhancements have made the first impression at North Canyon have an impact. Go Rattlers. And special project at Paradise Valley High School, the Counseling Office. We addressed an outdated and inefficient office layout by improving student accessibility, privacy, and a dynamic environment to investigate college and career opportunities. Counseling offices were reconfigured and renovated. Restrooms were updated, and an undersized and antiquated filing system was replaced. Pictured is the newly designed college and career office space. We were also able to carve out more space for better student waiting as well as redesigning the staff kitchen to provide more meeting space and an improved mailroom. So that concludes the special projects. Just a quick Indian Bend update, another substantial bond project. Facilities over the course of the past few months has repurposed, repurposed over half a million dollars in equipment and fixtures from the existing building, and we continue to do so. Construction fencing is up at the site. Preparation and planning for solar removal is, is happening. Not the structures themselves, but all the cabling underneath the ground. Demolition, demolition is going to begin following abatement and utility shutdown, and we're having an Indian Bend Community Steering, Steering Committee meeting this month. Just a quick update on our participation in the Building Renewal Grant Program. This year, two major projects, the Greenway Chiller and the North Canyon Weatherization. Over $3.6 million in grant money from that, and we are still pursuing, as competitive as it is, we have applications for Mercury Mine, Shadow Mountain, and Horizon High School, a couple of projects that are suitable for SFD. And for the 350 projects that we didn't get to see, they are represented on this spreadsheet. Our grand total, $44,596, $596,374. And then you take that SFD grants out of that. You take it to 40.9. That concludes the presentation tonight. I just want to close again with an expression of gratitude to our voters for supporting our, our bond. And we really do, the Facilities Department as a whole really appreciates the opportunity to provide our students and staff with improved, safe, comfortable learning environments. Thank you for the questions.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, Mrs. Barrigan. I see Mrs. Christianson has her hand up.
These first two are really easy questions. What is S, SFD grants? Is that school finance, something or other? What does that mean?
All right, here, here, here we go. The School Facilities Division runs the Building Renewal Grant Program. And so we, we apply to the SFD.
Sure, okay.
For the Building Renewal.
Good enough. Tile acoustic ceilings in the bathrooms, I'm assuming that's not to have good singing capabilities in the restaurants? What is that with the acoustic ceiling?
Yeah, just ceiling tile.
Just ceiling tile, okay. Last, last one, the, the Steering Committee at Indian Bend. Last time we had parent involvement, I asked, I asked the question, are we doing anything? It's, it's a, one of our high Latino community schools. What about the parents that don't speak English very well? Are we providing translative services? Because I know in the past, we used to have, I think, like headphones or something. Or have we thought about that? Because it's, it is important.
If we have any parents that need translation needs that are part of the Steering Committee, we would provide translation. I don't know if that's in need right now, but we would absolutely support them.
Yeah, I, I think that we should encourage all parents and, you know, make that, just maybe if we tell them that's available, because they won't, they won't volunteer. I know I'm, like, I was in that community in New Mexico, and they just wouldn't, wouldn't volunteer. So maybe if we offer that, we'd get more participation.
Thank you.
Anybody, Dr. Lynn?
So more a comment, less a question. So I know you commented on the tiny toilets at Sunset Canyon. So I know Sunset Canyon is getting a new life as James P. Lee. And obviously, I've been on the prior campus, and I am well aware of the very tall toilets that need specialized ladders is what it feels like for the kids to get up and down safely. Same thing with the sinks. They were way too high, and while safety measures were in place, as a parent walking into that, you're like, I don't even have this in my house. Like, it is great to see tiny toilets and to see this campus getting a new life and being retrofitted for the population that's there, and that those tiny toilets are going to make staff members' lives so much easier as the kids have those transitions on and off the toilet. There, it's really exciting to see tiny toilets. So thank you so much for thinking about that and prioritizing that at this campus and taking a campus that currently didn't have students and making it a special place for some of our youngest learners who hopefully turn into our long-term PV learners.
Just noting, I don't think tiny toilets has ever been said so many times in any meeting ever, anywhere. So that's kind of cool.
Welcome.
Yes, yes. So that's, I was going to thank, thank you, and thank you for your energy. I know it's late at night, and thank you for just, this was incredibly comprehensive, and I just appreciate the delivery as well. So thank you.
Mr. Panter, do you have anything?
It was just, when I saw those little toilets, I thought of the movie Elf. That's, that's all, this. Well, compared to the, the, the human on the Elf toilet, it was tiny. It's not worth pursuing.
Thank you again, Dr. Davis, Mrs. Barrigan. Thank you again to our voters who have approved our bonds and allow us to comprehensive, well, I wasn't going to say that because you are. Just, you know, enable us to, to do not just what's critical, but plan ahead and, and actually be comprehensive in how we approach our, our facilities' needs and maintenance. I see nobody else on this one. So next on the agenda is discussion item three, Update of Bond and Budget Override Programs and Capital Improvement Programs. And turn it over to Mrs. Barrigan again.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board, and Dr. Corson. While I wait for the presentation to go up, we'll stick with the plumbing theme and just let you know that the students do appreciate and recognize when we do the work. My daughter is at Shadow and said, Mom, the toilets now? The water doesn't come all the way to the top when you flush. That just goes straight down the hole. Excellent, that's what we want. I personally appreciate being able to wash my hands after using the restroom when I go to Shadow Mountain. So much-needed improvements there. And there are still additional plumbing issues there that we'll keep working on along with all of the other pieces that we have in the district. Sometimes it seems like there will never be enough money to cover all of the, the bond projects, but we slowly but steadily chip away at them and appreciate Dr. Davis and his team's work on those. And now to the more financial side of it. And this incorporates more than just the bond, but it also includes the Maintenance and Operation Override as well as our District Additional Assistance Override. So these are all of our voter-approved initiatives. All of our local voters have approved these. We are required to provide this presentation to the Governing Board in accordance with Arizona Revised Statutes 15491K and 481Y. But also, it's, and potentially in many ways more important because we want to inform our community what we're doing with the funds that they graciously approved for us to have. Our voter-approved initiatives include a 15% Maintenance and Operation Override. That's the maximum amount. 15% is 15% of the RCL, the Revenue Control Limit. And that number is calculated each year with that, those two numbers I showed you in the AFR presentation. Basically, our ADM number, our total weighted student count, times the amount that we get per pupil. And so we get an additional 15% of that total amount annually, which is about $30 million for us. Then we have the $6,410,000 annual District Additional Assistance Override. That was formerly known, for those of you who have been around longer, as the capital outlay override. And that is the intention of that one is for capital. And we have our two bonds still spending the remainder of the 2019 bond as well as the bond that was approved in 2023. For the Maintenance and Operation Override, that was last approved by our voters in November of 2022. As mentioned, 15% of the Revenue Control Limit. For fiscal year 2425, that was a little more than $3.7 million. That override is good and full for five years, which would put that through fiscal year 2728. Very often, the district has gone out in what was, what's called early renewal. We go out one year in case we don't get it passed that year. We have a second year to pass it without having to do any phase down. So that early renewal would be next November, November of 2026. And that would align with a potential going out for the DAA override renewal for November of 2026 as well. In our voter pamphlet, that's our message to our voters to explain to them what our intentions of using the additional funding for, the override for. This language was put in place when the override originally went out many years ago, and we've been consistent with that language so that we can consistently fund these things. So that specific language, those four bullet points, show in the voter pamphlet that goes out to voters when we ask them to renew the override. Each year, we have the expenditures and budget match with the override. That means our intention is to always spend every dollar of that override. We do need every dollar of that override. For the District Additional Assistance or the DAA override, that was last passed by voters in November of 2019, $6.41 million annually. That one's actually good and full for seven years. There's no phase down on that. So that's good through next fiscal year, fiscal year 2627. And as mentioned, we'd need to go to the ballot no later than November of 2026. So next November, so that we can continue for the 2728 school year. The District Additional Assistance Override Seven-Year Plan. Each year, we do $5.96 million for instructional materials. So those are the new curriculums that we're often adopting under Ms. Copan's purview. And then additionally, support vehicles. We cannot purchase what we call our white fleet vehicles with bond dollars. So we have the District Additional Assistance Override to be able to purchase those things. And so over a seven-year span, we get nearly $45 million to be able to do those instructional materials for our students and our support vehicles. For the fiscal year 2425, we have the $6.4 million in our budget as we always do. Our expenditures were just over $5.7 million. The difference between those is carry forward into future years. Ms. Copan and her team have a plan, and some years, the expenditure is a little bit more than the 5.9 that they have, and some years, it's, some years, it's a little bit less. Some adoptions are more expensive. Some adoptions are covering more grade levels. And so there are years where we need more money than others, and, and that's why some years, we spend a little bit more than the $6.4 million and some a little bit less. With our bonds, as mentioned, the $236 million bond was passed by voters in November of 2019. The $340 million bond passed by voters in November of 2023. And those do have to be sold within 10 years of voter approval. All of our 2019 authorization has been sold. It hasn't all been spent yet, but it has all been sold. And then we just, if you remember, did a sale in a month ago. It's late, a month-ish ago. And that was, that will leave us with a balance of $168 million with our 2023 authorization. We have tended to maintain a four-year bond cycle. I am hoping to try to stretch out to a five-year bond cycle this time. In other words, not to have to ask voters again for five years. But as costs of projects continue to increase, I'm not sure how likely that's going to be. That would potentially mean we would have an entire summer where we're not doing any bond projects. So the 2019 bond authorization, again, in reference to the voter pamphlet, this is what we said. We would put in each of the nonadministrative and the administrative categories in terms of what we intend to expend. And you see that the bulk of that is obviously in our facilities, buildings, and ground for our nonadministrative, meaning our school sites. That is where the bulk of our bonds go. And you'll see that again in the 2023 bond. For the 2019 bond, for expenditures in last fiscal year, we spent a little over five, excuse me, $50.5 million over all of those categories. Other than pupil transportation, we'd already expended our full amount for pupil transportation for the 2019 bond. So the summary on that authorization, we started So the summary on that authorization, we started with the authorization of two hundred and thirty-six million dollars, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five expenditures of a little over fifty and a half million, added to the hundred and fifty-one point eight million that we've already expended in the prior years, leaves us with a balance of a little more than thirty-three point seven million dollars. I expect the bulk, if not all of that, will be spent in this fiscal year, depending on the timing of some of the projects. Then moving on to the twenty twenty-three bond, we have, again, the nonadministrative and administrative categories that were put in the voter pamphlet, and the amount we expect to spend in each area, again, the bulk of that being in the facilities, buildings, and grounds for our nonadministrative, which means for our school sites. This year was the first year we began expending the twenty twenty-three bond, because we didn't sell twenty twenty-three bond until the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and starting out a little bit low, but we will, we have projects already in the works, and many of the projects that Dr. Davis did over the summer were not expended in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, as final bill out wasn't done until fiscal year, the current fiscal year we're in, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So just a little over three million dollars for the twenty twenty-three bond expenditures so far. And that means we have quite a bit of that still left to spend, about three hundred and thirty-seven million left. We do take this opportunity also to share our Arizona School Facilities Division funding, and Dr. Davis was speaking of this earlier, our building renewal grants that we received this year, those, that means that that frees up our bond dollars to be able to do different or additional projects and instead get that money from the state. The state does about two hundred million dollars in building renewal grants each year, and it is highly competitive. They run out of money, there is not enough money in the state for all of the projects that need to be done across the state, but we find it's important to seek as many of those dollars as we can, and got probably a little bit more than our fair share, considering there are about two hundred and twenty-five districts in the state of Arizona. And then there's a new school facilities fund that we had remaining from when we did new school facilities of a little over seventeen thousand dollars. It's basically just a fund their earning interest, that when we do have a new school facility, we can use that funding to support those costs. And a breakdown of our twenty-four, twenty-five capital expenditures, the bulk of them being the bond renovations, almost forty million. The bond other includes things like our pupil transportation vehicles, technology. We did furniture, furniture refreshes at some of our school sites, a little over fourteen million dollars. Then we have our district additional assistance that we discussed with our curriculum, pieces in our support vehicles, and then that school facilities division piece. And just a reminder, we have forty-nine sites with two hundred and fifty-eight buildings, over eight hundred and thirty-five acres of land, and more than five point two million dollars, excuse me, five point two million square feet of interior space. I, too, always take this opportunity, and as many opportunities as I can find, to thank our voters. The bulk of this presentation is because of their support that we are able to do these things. The, if, if we didn't have the voter support, this presentation would simply be about that SFD money, so we would be talking about two point six million dollars instead of plus fifty million dollars worth of work that we were able to do at our school site, so I very much appreciate that support. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you again, Mrs. Barrigan. I see Mrs. Christensen's hand up.
I just have one question.
Okay.
Okay. You alluded to the land, fifteen million. If we don't use it, does that go back to taxpayers, or does it get shuffled into other things? Is, is that allowed?
Yeah, that's what I had said earlier. We, if we do not need fifteen million dollars, which I said we will likely not need, I won't, I won't even sell that fifteen million dollars.
Okay.
So then it's, then it's never, it doesn't have to go back, because it was never taxed. The taxpayers were never taxed on that. So there's sort of three phases of the bond. We ask for the authorization, which we have, for fifteen million dollars, if we're specifically talking about the land. Then you can sell it, and then you can expend it. We, if I don't need the fifteen million dollars for land, which I do not think we will, I will never even go to this step with that one, to even have to worry about that third step.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody, oh, Mr. Pantera?
Yeah, thank you for the very thorough presentation. You shared some information with us earlier about the sale of bonds, and I guess because of our financial situation here in our district, we get, our bonds are better than other bonds, people want us to buy them quicker than other places?
Yes, you are referencing the summary that I provided to the board in the update this week. We had four point nine times the amount of subscription than we had bonds for sale, meaning if I had one bond for sale, I had nearly five people that wanted to buy that bond, so we were what's called oversubscribed. Not all school districts end up being in that situation, and despite the fact that we are a declining enrollment district, and that districts in the state of Arizona are sort of all experiencing that, they look at the the financial strength, the transparency that we provide, and these are things that they cite. These, this is not me saying that. The financial transparency, the strength of our finances, the management processes that we have in place, all, also, I, I follow those things, but all set forth by the people in the boards before me, before all of you, and it's been good financial sound practices for many, many years.
That's good to hear. I'm glad to hear that part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Lynn?
So you mentioned this teeny tiny amount, the seventeen thousand, that still remains for the new school facilities. I know it's a very tiny amount, but I imagine it goes a decent way in doing a rebuild. Is there any shelf life on that, or is that like slated to go for the Indian Bend rebuild that's coming up?
Did that
That got a specific thing it needs
It has to be a literal new, new school.
Oh, so it can't even be a rebuild, it has to be a literal new build?
Yes, yes.
So is there any shelf life for it then, to sit gaining interest? It is
No shelf life.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Again, it was incredibly thorough, as always. Before we adjourn, I'd like to remind everyone, and thank you all for staying, that the next regular board meeting will be held November sixth at six thirty PM. Ms. Wani, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed unanimously. We are adjourned.